Okay, what we will do with this 5:30 and we'll go ahead and start to begin. I'm going to call the San Bruno City Council Special Meeting of September 28th and 21st at 5:30 PM to order. May I please take roll call?
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason? I don't see her in the room yet. Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Move on to item three, public comments for items not on the agenda. We are having a public hearing regarding districting, not we, but districting. Are there any hands that wish to speak for items not on the agenda at this time under public comment? Seeing none, we will move into the public hearing, which is hold public hearings to: One, receive a report from staff on the districting process and permissible criteria to be considered to create district boundaries. Two, direct staff on the possible formation of a districting commission. And three, conduct a public hearing to receive public input on districting boundaries. And we'll turn it over to the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. Javon Brogan, city manager. We have a presentation for you tonight and we will end with discussion and direction hopefully. I'll give the first presentation, the second presentation will be by the National Demographics Corporation, which is the city's higher districting expert. And the final third presentation of the night will be done by Tripeppy Smith, the city's public... Is that we're having a technical issue? The city's, Tripeppy Smith, the city's communications outreach and public engagement consultant for this effort. And then finally, we'll have discussion. And so first, why don't we begin with just a little background, why district elections and why now? So, for the members of the public, and I know the city council knows this, the city of San Bruno is in the process of making a change on how voters elect members to the San Bruno City Council. And this is being done at a time along with hundreds and frankly thousands of cities and school districts across the state that are undergoing similar changes. And all of it is related to compliance with the California Voters Rights Act. And we'll talk a lot about that and there's a lot of data that is a part of this project. It will replace the city's current at-large citywide election structure, where we currently elect a directly elected mayor and four council members at large. This process, and we'll talk a little bit about this tonight in the second presentation, will not change the directly elected mayor model, but it will change the council member process. By, as you see the diagram there in blue, all four council members are elected at large. One model, and there are various models that can be talked about, but it's to have a model where you have four roughly equal sized districts with the directly elected mayor. And so, we'll talk a little bit about that and the structures that are open to the city of San Bruno. Given the ballot measure in 1977 that called for the city of San Bruno to elect four council members and one directly elected mayor, what options are available to the city in compliance with that structure that was outlined? So why now? The city council will remember on March 10th, there was a staff report and a presentation about potential exposure to litigation and attorney fees with regard to the California Voting Rights Act. And just locally, there was, in yesterday's paper, the city of Belmont received a letter and has decided to transition to district elections. And we know a number of cities in our county and across the state have done so as well. And the city council on March 10th, 2020, received a presentation by NDC about transitioning to a by-district method. This though was right at the beginning of COVID-19 and there were a lot of concerns about how could we have public engagement and all the required public outreach at the beginning of what we now know is a has been a year and a half plus pandemic. So, on March 24th, the council made a decision. They passed a motion to postpone the analysis and the effort until 2022. And that's the November 2022 election. And the council will remember in June of this year, we took a contract to you for your approval and that would be National Demographics Corporation's contract. And then the budget, you included funds for the community outreach. And you'll see in the presentation, that third presentation by Tripeppy Smith, that the community outreach that is planned for this effort is certainly far and above what we've done in most of any of our projects. And rightfully so, because this process will forever change how council members are elected. And so, we need to do an extremely thorough job at reaching out to our community in multiple language and multiple venues. And we have planned and are prepared to do that. And a part of that, we'll be asking members of the community to help us draw the district map. What are the communities of interest within the city of San Bruno? And so, there will be various efforts where members of the community will vote virtually and we are planning in person. We'll be able to draw maps that will inform the decision-making process. And so, we're ready for that discussion and really look forward to what will, between now and April, will be a very robust process of engagement and decision-making by both the council and members of the community. Quick project team introduction, you have your city staff. And so, this is being worked on by various staff in the city manager's office, as well as the city clerk's office and the city attorney's office. Jennifer Deanos, the assistant to the city manager, is our lead analyst on the project and providing direct support to our consultants. I am intimately involved, as is your city attorney, your city clerk and your assistant city manager, Jennifer Rizell. Really, the full support of the city manager's office and the city attorney's office is supporting this project because it is so integral to the city of San Bruno. As I said before, National Demographics Corporation, a districting expert that will support the city with demographic analysis. You'll receive a presentation by Kristen Parks just shortly after I sit down. And then Tripeppy Smith for public engagement and public outreach. You'll receive a presentation by Jennifer Netwig. And so, with that, I am going to end my presentation. And Kristen Parks from NDC will share her screen in her presentation. Thank you, council.
Good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Medina. My name is Kristen Parks. I'm a consultant with National Demographics. And tonight, I'm going to give you an overview of the districting process and share with you the initial demographic data that we have available. So, diving right in here. As you know, San Bruno currently uses an at-large system to elect city council members. And as the city manager explained to us in those introductory remarks, in 2020, San Bruno proactively decided to adopt a resolution to transition to by-district election. So, that is where we are now, is actually starting that process. So, a little bit of background, perhaps for members of the public who aren't familiar, California has a Voting Rights Act that was written to encourage jurisdictions to adopt by-district elections. And so, what San Bruno chose to do, rather than wait for, to receive a claim of violation of this law, was San Bruno proactively adopted a resolution. And this helps the city avoid potentially very costly litigation. So, that's why we're here, and again, you heard it from the city manager already. And again, I'm rehashing a little bit, but bear with me, that San Bruno currently has a directly elected mayor and a four-member city council. And therefore, it's logical that the districting process here will create four city council districts and each district will elect one council member to represent it. So, again, here's how that looks graphically, you just saw this. All right, now we're getting into what's new. Our timeline for districting is driven by four required public hearings that must be held prior to the adoption of the district map, as well as taking into consideration the elections coming in 2022 and making sure that all of this is complete within the time for the county registrar of voters to assign voters to precincts. So, what's unusual about this cycle in this year is usually after the decennial census, we receive census data quite quickly in the first few months of the year. However, due to delays in the processing of 2020's census data, instead of receiving that data at the end of March, the US Census Bureau released it on August 12th. So, I will be showing you in this presentation, demographic data released on August 12th. That is the final population data coming from the US Census Bureau. However, there's another step that the state of California takes. And this is new for California. And that is for California to make adjustments to the census data, primarily with regard to our state prison population and reassigning state prisoners back to their last known home address and counting them there rather than in the location of the prison. That data was released on September 20th, I think actually after midnight, so maybe technically September 21st. National Demographics is currently combing through that data. We're finding a number of errors and so, what you're going to see tonight doesn't account for that new release of data, but we will have that processed soon. And I can speak to the new total population number when we get to that point. So, San Bruno has already scheduled the four public hearings. Two are required to be held prior to the release of any actual district maps, any proposed maps. So, this is the first hearing, there'll be another on October 19th. This is primarily to educate the public and to receive public input on communities of interest and the public priorities for districting. There will also be community workshops in the month of November. And the purpose of those workshops is to provide a little bit more informal opportunity for the public to engage with the process and for us to demo the software that we're using, anything available to the public so that they can actually draw their own district maps and submit them to be considered by the council. So, there are two more public hearings, January and February, where we'll actually look at the maps that have been drafted and make revisions to them and hopefully find a final map, a consensus around a final map that the council can adopt. This full schedule and all of the details can be found on the districting website, which is districtingsanbruno.org. So, everything that you're going to want to find related to districting is there. So, in terms of the process, the council can choose one of three routes. And the first route is for city council to retain the authority to adopt the district map after conducting extensive public outreach and engagement, right? As we saw already, we have already planned for four public hearings plus additional community workshops. So, we're already planning for that extensive public outreach and engagement. The city has also retained the services of Tripeppy Smith, who have expertise in their consulting in this area. So, that's the first option. The second option is for the city to appoint an advisory commission that can focus on the districting process. What the advisory commission would do would be to hold a series of meetings themselves to review draft and propose maps and ultimately recommend a map to the council. However, with an advisory commission, the council retains the authority to adopt the map that's recommended or make changes to it or completely reject it. So, the council does retain that ultimate decision-making power. The advisory commission just helps along the way as a specialized body for districting. Thirdly, there's independent commissions and hybrid commissions. These commissions we tend to see in larger cities or in cities where the districting process may be more contentious or under more public scrutiny. And what these commissions do is really take that, the council delegates the authority, some of the decision-making authority to the commission and take that out of the council's hands. The council can set the appointment process for these commissioners, but may not directly appoint them. There are extensive legal rules and requirements for independent and hybrid commissions. Independent commissions are slightly different from hybrid commissions. I'm grouping them together here. But if there is interest in going in that direction, I can certainly provide more information. But ultimately, an independent commission will choose the final district map. A hybrid commission will recommend two maps, of which the council must adopt one. So, I'm going to say that one more time, just because I know it's confusing. Independent commission has the authority to actually adopt the district map. A hybrid mission will recommend two maps to council and council must adopt one of the two. So, these are the three options. Of these three options, NDC has, we probably have almost 100 cities that we're working with in the state of California. And we have cities that have chosen to go each of these three directions. However, most commonly, we're seeing city council drive the process, particularly because of the time constraints that we're seeing with the late release of the census data. If we'd been able to start this process back in April, there would have been a lot more time to recruit commissioners and go through the extensive vetting and education and getting the commissions up to speed. That is a little bit of a time crunch, it is still possible. So, as, once we choose how we're going to do this, then there are additional legal requirements guiding what we consider when we actually start putting pen to paper to draw boundaries for districts. And first and always supreme is our federal law, as you all know. Federal law says when we draw these districts, each one should have more or less the same population. And that is a way to ensure fairness, that each council member is representing more or less the same number of residents. We have to make sure we're complying with the Federal Voting Rights Act, which says we need to be sure that our which says we need to be sure that our district's boundaries are not taking away voting power from protected classes of voters. So for that reason, we will look at voting-age citizen data by race and ethnicity. However, federal law says we cannot draw districts based solely on race or ethnicity, and that that can't be the main thing we're looking at. So we are also going to look at other demographic information as well. In the state of California, there is a new law in place called, oops, the Fair Maps Act. And the Fair Maps Act gives cities a list of criteria that must be considered when drawing district boundaries. And not only do we have to consider all of four of these criteria, we have to consider them in order. So what we're given is a rank ordered list. So what that means is the top of the list, number one, is actually more important than number four. So to the extent practicable, the law says, districts should be contiguous. What that means is each district should be one whole piece, all connected, and no disconnected separate pieces of that district. So that's about the shape of a district. The second criterion is to minimize the division of neighborhoods and communities of interest within the city, which means as we're drawing boundaries, we don't want to divide up our neighborhoods into different council districts. The same for our communities' interests. Third, to create easily identifiable boundaries. And the way that we can do that is by making sure that our district boundaries follow natural lines that we're already familiar with, roads or highways, waterways, that sort of thing. Four is to maintain compactness or to draw districts that are compact. And we're talking about compactness, we're talking about population. And if we are drawing a district, we want to make sure we're not intentionally bypassing a population of people so that we can go farther away and include within the district a more distant population. So if your district is not compact, often it will be a strange shape, and you can identify it that way. But again, sometimes you may need to draw a district that isn't compact. For instance, if you are ensuring compliance with the Federal Voting Rights Act. California law also tells us, we can't draw district boundaries that favor or discriminate against a political party. So again, we won't even be looking at party registration data, partisanship, or any of that. Now, there may be other goals that are unique to the city of San Bruno. Of course, preserve core of existing districts should not be on this slide because there are no existing districts in San Bruno, so scratch that one. But to, as we, and the same with minimizing changes. Well, minimizing changes to election cycles simply means we don't want to put any voters in San Bruno that expect to vote for their council members in 2022 into districts where they wouldn't have a chance to vote until 2024. This list of other goals here, though, really, it can be anything. And the point being that, once we've complied with federal and state law, we can talk about other criteria. We just need to make sure that those other criteria don't violate state or federal law. This is a lot. We'll be mentioning these things throughout the process. And they're all described on the website. So if members of the public are hearing this and they're a bit overwhelmed, it's all laid out for you on the website. And we will refer back to these criteria as we start looking at specific maps. So looking at what the census shows us from 2020, it showed a total population for the city of San Bruno of 43,908 people. After the state reallocated prisoners, and this is not shown on the slide, San Bruno only gained an additional 39 people. So that number will go up by 39 people, but that's a quite small difference. We take the total population of the city, and we divide it by the number of districts we're going to draw, which is four. So if we divide that total population by four, we get the ideal population size for each district. And in this case, we're going to look for each district to contain just 10,977 people. And what you're looking at here in terms of the demographics is citywide, right? Because we don't have districts yet, we're looking at some citywide data. All of this data is available to be shown on maps. So I'm going to show some of it to you at the census, it'll be displayed at the census block level. And so you can see, you can start to get a sense of what the demographics of different parts of the city look like. So looking at Latino CVAP. CVAP is just an acronym that stands for Citizen Voting Age Population. So again, when we're talking about the Voting Rights Act, we're, we want to look at where voting age, so over 18 citizens are. And so this is where some of those Latino populations are concentrated. All of the maps that I'm going to show you are heat maps. So heat maps go from cold to hot, warm, right? And so the purples and blues are areas with smaller percentages of Latinos. And then up to the yellow and red, we have 75% to 100% of that block being Latino in the red blocks. So that's how you interpret all of these maps. They will hopefully be useful for the public and the council in identifying where there may be communities of interest in the city and areas that may wish to be grouped together into a district. So here's the same map for African-American voting-age population, voting-age citizens. You can see there's very, very few, most of the city is under 10% per city block. We can't go down any lower than the city block. So when I show a map like this, it's important for me to point out that we want to hear from the public, and the public should bring their testimony for sure if there are particular geographic areas where there are, where African-American residents of San Bruno have a community of interest that they may want to bring to the table to talk about for districting. So even though this doesn't go, show us between 0 and 10%, please don't look at this map and think, oh, there's no African-Americans in San Bruno, right? That wouldn't be true. This is the map for Asian-American voting-age citizens. So same exact heat map. You see the Asian-American populations are distributed across the city. And we are well aware that many of the Asian-American communities, you know, as with the Latino communities, may identify differently based on different languages they speak or wherever. And we are only showing what data we get from the Census Bureau. So there's definitely diversity and variation within these communities. So what we're showing you is just starting point. We can look at the percentage of people that are speaking Spanish at home. And again, you got a slightly different map. So there's a lot of demographics we can show. This map shows the percentage of families with children under 18 at home for each block. And this one is showing you the percentage of renters displayed at each census block. Or this may be block group. You can see that the shapes are a little bit larger. So I've mentioned a couple times now, communities of interest. It's probably useful to define that term as it is specific to redistricting. If you remember when I talked about Californian state law, state law says we should minimize the division of communities of interest when we're drawing district boundaries. We want to try to keep communities of interest together within a single district so that that community has a chance to be fairly represented. So state law defines the community of interest as the population sharing social or economic interests in common. And we're really, the reason that we care about this is when we draw districts, each district will group together neighborhoods and communities of interest. So we want to make sure we're minimizing the division of those communities into multiple council districts. And communities of interest are not an objective thing. I can't tell San Bruno what the communities of interest are. That is where we need to hear from the council and the community members as to where their communities are, and particularly the communities that they care to be kept within a single council district with one council member representing them. So these communities, I also like to say, you can define them in almost any way you want. There is no wrong answer, right? We want to hear from it. And any comment that the public brings telling us, you know, here, here's my community. We are a community of, you know, folks that are living in, you know, there's three. I'm going to give maybe an example from the county of San Mateo, right? If there's an area of the county where there's multiple mobile home parks that consider themselves a community in the sense that they have shared experiences, and the county regulates some of the things that affect the mobile home parks. So they may identify as one community to interact with the county. They may want to be kept in one district. Of course, these are ones that are geographically in the same area. So what brings that community together and where it is? Those are the only things that we really need to know from the public. So if you're tuning in via Zoom and you are interested in making a public comment, these questions here can help structure what you let us know, starting at this point tonight. Because again, when we draw district boundaries, we're going to want to draw districts that are a collection of communities. So what are those communities, right? They're at an even smaller level than the district itself. You can also look at things like transit, like maybe folks that are living all around the BART station, that may have similar issues, concerns, experiences. That may be one way to define a community of interest. Zoning areas, school attendance zones. And though I will point out that school districts, attendance zones are not the same as school boards, right? And that's a totally separate process governed by the education code. So the city's districting process is very different than legally what schools will do. However, we can talk about communities being the people who, you know, their kids all go to the same school, or they live all around the same park, or share some of the same, you know, people who maybe work all for, you know, YouTube have some shared interests. I don't know, right? There's many different ways to define what your community is. NDC offers to the public, beyond just that testimony, we offer a way for the public to actually submit maps. And what's great about these mapping tools is that they're actually very easy to use. So once we, NDC finishes processing the California adjusted data, we'll be launching a paper map that folks can actually draw on with pens and pencils to draw their ideal district or draw all four districts that they want to propose for the city of San Bruno, as well as an online tool that you use a paintbrush to draw on. It's a very easy-to-use tool. But the nice thing about the online tool is you can look at some of those demographic data points that I just showed you on the online mapping tool. And so that can be helpful, as well as the population information. So these tools will all be available within the coming weeks. So certainly, there will be announcements made about those. And the paper maps will also be posted on the website in PDF form. So folks can print them out at home and draw maps on them. What's great about this is that it really gives the public a way to participate in this process. And perhaps even at the end, NDC often sees maps be adopted that were originally drawn by a resident of that jurisdiction. So that's pretty cool, you know, it may go through revisions. But ultimately, the public can drive this process to the extent that they get involved and engaged with it. So public mapping tools are a great resource for that. And I am going to pass it now over to Tri Pepe Smith to talk a little bit about outreach. Thank you very much.
Perfect. And thank you, Kristin, as I get these slides up. Okay, can everyone see those okay? Perfect. Okay, well, good evening, members of city council. My name is Jennifer Nedwig, as has been mentioned, and I'm Tri Pepe Smith, the public affairs and marketing firm that the city and NDC are partnering with to publicize and garner the outreach and engagement for this district formation effort. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share an update with you about the outreach engagement efforts so far. So on this slide, you can see an outline for what I'll be sharing with you tonight. Basically, just a high-level overview of the outreach and engagement efforts to date and an introduction to some of the significant outreach and engagement plans that we have from moving forward. And before I get into the examples of these outreach efforts, I do want to pause and focus on the why for a moment. So to piggyback on some of the things that Kristin Parks from NDC mentioned, it is incredibly important that the members of the San Bruno community have a voice in this process of voting districts. So it is the community members who know their neighborhoods, the communities best. And so we want to do everything we can to help San Bruno reach your diverse community members and help them feel heard, help them have a voice in this process. And so that's really what we'll be talking about here tonight. So then here you can see, as I mentioned, we have partnered with the city to launch a dedicated website on the district formation. It rolled out on September 21st. And on this site, members of the public can find extensive resources to learn about the process, access all the materials and meeting information, and see opportunities to provide feedback. So you can see in the screenshot that visitors to the website have the option of selecting their language. And the website will continue to be updated throughout the process, including resources such as press releases, meeting recording, and materials from each hearing and workshop moving forward, and eventually the tools that members of the public will need to develop their own draft maps. And on the site as well, you can see the multiple opportunities for community members to participate by either signing up to subscribe to email updates or utilizing that contact tab to provide feedback directly. And then on this slide, you can see the initial press release that has already been distributed so far. So that was sent out on September 23rd to both print and online media. So that's pretty self-explanatory there. And then we've also started to partner with the city to push out social media on this topic. So here's an example of what went out on September 24th in multiple languages, as you can see. It went out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor. And we'll continue to partner with the city to have district formation content going out once a week on all platforms moving forward. And we'll also continue to have translations available for those. In addition to Spanish, moving forward, we will have Cantonese and Mandarin as well. And to further emphasize the multilingual approach, here you can see that we plan to have translated to here you can see that we plan to have translated materials and/or interpreters available for social media. As I just mentioned, um, on the website, to elaborate on the languages that are available, you can see here, this isn't even a full list that you can see on your screen. There's just dozens of all different languages that will automatically translate all the content on the site available to community members. And then, for the upcoming community workshops, we plan to have interpreters available there in Spanish, Cantonese, and Mandarin to support any live interpretation needs as well as to have the different languages, um, available in recordings that can then be posted to the website. And then, my last slide on the outreach to date is to highlight the direct outreach to community groups prior to this hearing. So, you can see on the slide the election code language that requires good faith efforts to reach out to various types of organizations and groups. And so, the Tri Pepe Smith team has partnered with the city to develop an initial list of those community groups. And we've contacted them to ask for their participation and for their help in putting the word, um, out about this process through their own network. And if tonight there are any individuals or groups who would like to be a part of that and haven't already been part of those communications, we are more than welcoming for additions to that. Please just go ahead and go to the website and go through that contact tab to share your information, and we would love to partner with you moving forward. And speaking of moving forward, um, this is the last slide about outreach efforts to come, um, to highlight some of the more significant efforts coming up in the near term. You can see here, hearing number two is scheduled for October 19th at 5:00 PM. Then, we have listed the two community workshops we've been talking about. We're looking at community workshop number one to take place on November 1st at 7:00 PM. And then, community workshop number two will be sometime in November. We're still nailing down a location for that, so the date and time are to be announced. And then, we're also going to continue partnering with the city on a couple of different, um, forums and media outlets of our own. So, people who tune into CityNet will see in October a segment on what's happening around town, some districting news. And then, we'll also be utilizing the City Manager e-newsletters, which go out to more than 6,000 residents to further publicize the whole process. And then, for each of these hearings that are coming up and for the workshops, we'll continue to use each of the tools we've talked about tonight to just further reiterate and engage people so that they're aware of each step. Um, this will be especially important as we do approach that third hearing and fourth hearing. So, people will know the deadlines for when they can submit their draft map and provide that feedback for consideration. And with that, I will transition to a few general slides on behalf of the larger districting team. So, here you can see a brief recap of all the recommendations from the staff report that staff provided to you on this item. And, um, lastly, before we open it up, here are the notes and questions for consideration as the session is opened up for public hearing. And so, with that, I'll open it up for any questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you for the, uh, information, the detail. And then, yes, it was a lot, but I think you walked us through it, uh, effectively, so thank you. And the City Manager, is there anything else, um, from you before I see if, uh, my colleagues have any questions on the presentation?
Uh, no council member, uh, thank you very much. Uh, happy to, uh, respond to any questions and then return back to the decision on a commission after questions.
Okay, I want to turn to my colleagues first. We'll see if there's any questions on the presentation so we can get clarity or if there's any more detail that you wanted through the presentation. Thank you. Councilmember Mason?
Thank you. It was a helpful presentation. I just wanted to ask when we were gonna be provided the alternatives, um, which is something that I believe the majority of council had requested, um, in our intent to move forward as part of the decision to move forward.
Sure, um, yeah, Councilmember Mason, uh, quick clarification. Are you responding, are, are you asking about alternatives, um, maps and options uh, with regard to district elections? Or are you referring to, uh, alternative, uh, election methods?
Uh, we discussed the alternatives to districting, and then you offered also in addition to that alternatives to voting methods. So, at this point, it would be both.
Sure, um, let's, um, first talk about alternatives to districting. Based on the city council's direction, uh, to transition to district elections and do the analysis, that process will happen, uh, through the data analysis that NDC puts together. Um, and council will have various, uh, if you choose the option where council is the final decision, uh, maker, you will have options through that process of what the district maps look like. Um, I can ask NDC to provide additional, uh, commentary on that, and then I think we should build to the alternative voting structures, which I know we talked about in the report, uh, but was not talked about in the presentation. And so, we, we can talk about that.
Yeah, just very quickly, um, what NDC does is for every map submitted by members of the public or organizations or anyone who's coming to the table in this process, all of that becomes public record. All of that is processed by NDC and posted online onto an interactive review map. So, you can see all of the different proposed maps. And then, we have a series of meetings, right? These will be the, uh, last two public hearings where we can go over the maps. Um, depending on whether it's a commission or council, uh, NDC will take direction on how to revise those maps, which maps maybe, we usually encourage our clients to select three to five maps to focus in on. Um, and then, hopefully from three to five, you go down to maybe one or two. We make tweaks, uh, on those maps, and then ultimately, a final map is adopted. So, that, that's how the process works in terms of actually selecting the map.
Did I answer a question, Councilmember?
I think that, I feel like if we're, if we're finalizing the map and we're...
Having, uh, what's having, uh, problems, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
I, I guess a better question is, um, are, are, because if we're finalizing the map, then it means that we're still, uh, we're focusing on districting. And so, let me just ask, are, are there no other alternatives to districting?
So, the alternative to districting, um, would have been to remain at large. And so, because the council did decide to move forward with districting, this really is the ideal time to do it because the census data was just released. Um, and this is something that can be completed in time for the 2022 election. Um, have we seen cities switch to districts and then switch back? That, I don't know if we've actually seen yet. But again, keeping in mind that if the city were to change course and not, uh, continue with districts, that the city would then potentially be liable under the California Voting Rights Act and may receive, um, one of the, the letters alleging violation of the law.
Conclude for now? Councilmember Hamilton, please.
Um, I, I also have questions on some of the information that was in the staff report but not covered in, uh, presentations tonight. And that, um, has to do with the, the, the staff report was very clear that it's, that, you know, it, it's obvious why we need to go to district, uh, to, to, to districting and, um, why some of the other things that we've talked about, um, uh, rotating mayor and alternative voting mechanisms aren't, aren't on the table now because of the time it would take to do all of those things. So, and, and the impossibility of doing them simultaneously. So, the, all of that makes sense, but what I'm, what I'm not clear on is if we're looking at establishing four districts now, because that's what fits our model, if we were to go to a rotating mayor structure, which obviously would require a vote of the people, would we have to do this entire process all over again? Because we would no longer have a directly elected mayor, which would mean that the at-large seat wouldn't be directly elected anymore. I'm just concerned about, um, in, in that area. My, my last, this is more of a comment. I'm also a bit concerned with the, with the rushing that is, that, it was no fault of anyone, but the, the, you know, that several month delay in getting the, getting the, um, census data means that that limited our options a whole lot, um, in order to, in order to make the deadline that the council set last year. And that's not a criticism because no one, no one would know that we wouldn't get the data. But, uh, I think that's something that might, that we might need to consider.
Yeah, it, uh, so Vaughn, I don't know if you wanted, I'm sure you have things you wanted to say. I just was going to say, uh, the, in terms of having to redo the districting process, um, if you do the process now and establish four districts with that at-large mayor, right? Keeping that, then you don't have to go through the process again until 2030 after that census. Now, if in the interim, you decided that you wanted to go from four council districts to five council districts and have a rotational mayor, then you would have to go through, uh, the process again, yes. And, um, the question about the mayor is complicated by, of course, this 1977 proposition that says there mu, there must be four council members and it's elect, directly elected mayor. Rotational mayor, um, is not a directly elected mayor. So, that may require, uh, voter approval to change. That is my understanding from our conversations with the city attorney.
Yes, uh, Kristin, uh, you said it exactly. Um, I could recap it, but, but what I'll, what I'll also say is that staff did have initial conversations knowing that this topic, uh, may come up. Uh, and there may, and I say may be a way, uh, should the data support that, where the city could transition to five districts through the districting process if the data showed that doing that was in furtherance of complying with California Voting Rights Act. That may allow, if the council so desired, to not have to amend the 1977, um, ballot measure. All depends on the data, and at this point, it's way too early to say. Uh, but to recap what, what Kristin said, because in 1977, the voters in the city of San Bruno, uh, passed a measure which said the city of San Bruno shall elect a directly elected mayor and four council members that really constrains the box, uh, to which we can undertake district elections under. And, and what that is really is the one city-wide district with a directly, uh, elected mayor and four equally shaped council districts. Um, there is, uh, the potential that if, there's not enough time to, if there was a desire from the city council to change the directly elected mayor, to put it on the ballot, get that information by November 2022. It'd be called a special election, which would be, uh, uh, very costly and we probably, at this point, wouldn't even have the data, uh, in order to do the work to convert to districts by November 22. And so, we're really caught in a, a situation that in converting to districts, we really need to keep with that, uh, intent, um, be it a 1977 ballot measure, um, a measure F, where it's a directly elected mayor and four councilor forms. But for the small chance that in some way in compliance with the California Voting Rights Act, it would be a fairer, um, situation to have five equally shaped districts. And that will require both the data, um, concluding that and significant legal analysis to avoid, um, going back to the voters. And maybe something that the city, uh, decides not to do. Uh, and so, I hope that's clear. There's another question that Councilmember Mason asked, has talked about in the staff report about alternative voting mechanisms, and I, I just want to make sure that we, that we address that, um, uh, and not overlook that. But are there any more sort of discussions on this topic before we go back to that topic?
I just wanted to add that if the city were not going to adopt districts now, um, you could be forced under this California Voting Rights Act to adopt districts in a much shorter timeline. So, what you're working with now does give you more time for public engagement. Um, and also to put it in perspective, um, you know, every county in the state right now is working with a December 15th deadline, uh, and the same data release. So, you, you know, you do have a little more time than that at least.
City manager, you wanted to go to the other, back to Councilmember, uh, Mason's question?
Uh, absolutely, and, and thank you, Councilmember Mason, um, uh, for bringing that up. So, yes, uh, there was a discussion at prior council meetings and, uh, full city council direction to through this process look into potential alternative voting mechanisms. And let me pause right there and say what that is. That's a voting, that's not necessarily the district structure. That's a, the how members of the city council, um, are elected. And the, the classic burden are ranked choice voting or an instant runoff process, where it's not just simply the person with the most votes win, wins, but there's a, there's a, a separate process to determine who's the, the winner of that council seat. So, we did, uh, analyze that. Uh, unfortunately, to have an alternative voting structure, we need to be what is called a charter city. We are currently a general law city. In order to be a charter city, that needs to be approved by the voters. The next time in which we can do that is November 22. The city council has already given prior direction, uh, through a strategic initiative to look at a, uh, potential ballot measure to become a charter city tied with potentially having a real estate transfer tax for commercial properties. That is an existing initiative, onset work program that we are working on. And we will be coming to the city council, uh, in the second meeting of October, October 26th, as noted in the staff report, to talk about ballot measures. Should the city council elect to include alternative voting measures? And at, at that time, we can research a ballot item that calls for us going to district elections, um, that, uh, I'm sorry, that, that calls for the city becoming a charter city that includes the transfer tax and potentially an alternative voting system. That does create a significant, uh, timing and workload hurdle to get all of that done. And there are challenges to putting that on the same ballot where council members, uh, where members of the public will be electing members by district for the first time. And so, we, yes, council asked, are there alternative voting methods? Absolutely. Can we do them right now? No, unfortunately, we cannot because we are not a charter city. Should we become a charter city at some point? We can add to the charter. Uh, if so directed by city council, we can look to have that as a part of the initial process. There's a, um, there are some complications to that, but we, we, uh, uh, are ready and will be, and, uh, can discuss that with the city council at that October 26th meeting that's already on the calendar, where we will get final direction from the city council or we'll be looking for final direction from the city council on what items the staff is preparing for potential ballot measures for November 22. And so, that, that really is the time to talk about alternative voting measures because it has to be linked to becoming a charter city.
Thank you. Are there any other, at this time, questions from colleagues on the presentation? I'd want to open it up. This is a public hearing. And I know we've had, uh, Mr. Tong been patient. Um, and I'd like to, uh, go to the public at this time, since it is a public hearing, and anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this topic, you could raise, uh, your virtual hand. And, um, the city clerk will bring you in to the room for your up to three minutes.
First speaker is Jeffrey Tong.
Hi, this is Jeffrey Tong. I actually raised my hand before, uh, uh, city manager Gorgon mentioned city charter. But, um, if we do adopt the city charter, would we need to put it on the November 2021 ballot? Or is there, uh, if that's not enough time, can we put it on what? February or March, uh, something like in the spring, prior to November 2022?
Thank you for your comments. Are there any, is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak on this topic at this time? Once we do close public hearing, I will not allow you to be able to come back to speak, so that would be the time in which, please, have your comments. Not seeing any other persons wishing to speak, uh, I'm gonna ask for a, uh, motion and second to close public hearing, please.
Motion to close?
Thank you. Motion made, seconded Medina Hamilton, to close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Mina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. There was the one question, um, from Mr. Tong, and I think city manager, I believe you had kind of answered it in regards to the timeline and the cost, that it would not be viable for, it is not viable for this November, um, nor would it be, it would, if it were to be done in a special election, the magnitude of the cost would be quite high. Am I correct, or you want to help add anything to that?
Absolutely. Uh, the, the cost of a special election, we anticipate would be roughly a half a million dollars, so $500,000, as well as there's a timing issue, that even if there wasn't a money issue, there is a timing issue, because while, um, this process needs to be concluded by April 22, uh, there's also, um, other election timing deadlines with the county elections office. If the city did desire to put a special election, um, on, on the ballot, just, there's, there's not enough time for this process, and so, we're really looking at, um, keeping with the intent that the city council set, uh, in March of 2020, which is converting to district elections in 22, and doing all the prerequisite analysis, um, in community meetings as, as was presented tonight. Thank you.
I'm sorry, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, please, city attorney.
Yes, the city manager is absolutely correct, uh, but one other aspect of this is that a charter city cannot be put on the ballot, except that-
Uh, I lost, uh, you went, somebody muted you, and I don't think it was personal, but you got muted.
The, the charter city has to be done at a regular election. It cannot be done at a special election.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. With that, it's back to my colleagues. As you know, we, we received the report. We are asking, uh, we are being asked to direct staff on the possible formation of a districting commission, and we've been given three options. Don't know if my colleagues have a particular thought process on that. Don't know if it would be helpful to break back and have it as a shared screen. Would colleagues want that on a shared screen again, or is that not necessary? Okay. Not necessary, and, uh, looking for, um, there were three options. Anybody want to offer their comments or suggestions? Thank you, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, so I wanted to first thank, um, the consultants for just confirming that this is the only option forward for us, um, and that there's no alternatives. I think, knowing that, um, when we look at the two, I would, um, prefer one or two, and I would actually like to ask, because I know we've gone back and forth with staff around time, um, and I'm wondering if there's a, a new commission that started. Is that workable within everybody's schedule? Because it's saying that, you know, the council would appoint the commission, so it's going to be a couple of meetings. The commission recommends a map to the council, which I'm guessing it would be a map that would come to the council anyway, if it was just number one. And then council retains authority to revise and adopt that map. And I'm just wondering if we're better off, um, if it goes to council, and then instead of having meetings to appoint a committee, have town hall sessions where the council can actually ask the public what they'd like to see, um, for the time spent, since it's eventually going to come to us anyway, versus actually creating a commission and then having, you know, to host all these commission meetings to essentially come back to us again. So, I think just timing-wise, um, what, what's, what's the thought process around that?
So, what I've heard out of the three options, uh, one or two, but obviously you had a question in regards to some of the particulars. Uh, city manager is, uh, a response, please?
Well, thanks to the mayor, uh, in response to Councilmember Mason's question, uh, staff thinking exactly, we would really encourage and recommend option one, uh, given, given the time, uh, and, uh, the, what we would need to do if there was a commission established is go through the full analysis and policy setting questions with the condition, with the commission, a whole, whole suite meeting there. And then also, because that commission's decision is not binding, repeat that process for the city council. Uh, it's also very important to note that there is robust community engagement in any option we choose. You have a presentation on the website, can be translated to many, many languages. We are taking, uh, the additional step of when we have, uh, uh, virtual sessions on Zoom to have translators, so someone can go to a room where the information will be provided in Spanish and, um, and Chinese. Uh, we are also, uh, will be doing that for any in-person workshops we have, uh, and the, the printed material will be translated in at least two languages. So, uh, we, we are, uh, going above and beyond, uh, of the communication outreach efforts for this effort, because it is that important, uh, and it will change how members of the city council are elected. And it's also important to note that there were two workshops in November. There will be one during the week and one on a Saturday. So, the one that said TBD, it will be a Saturday date, and we are currently securing a location for that Saturday session, we'll announce it. And so, we are, we are also making that a part of the, the hours.
Thank you. Uh, city manager, I just want to be mindful that we're coming up on 6:40, so I'd at least like to get around the room and have everyone give their input. Next will be Councilmember Hamilton, please.
So, based on what was just discussed, we, obviously, the most important, um, part of all of this is the community engagement, and given that we're going to get that in any of the options, given the short timelines, I would be in favor of option one.
Thank you for your comments and making it concise. Thank you. Other, uh, comments from my other two colleagues? Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. Yeah, I really would have preferred establishing a commission, but given the constraints that have been spelled out, that it doesn't seem like it's an option, and, uh, given that we're constrained by a lot of other parameters that, uh, you know, basically take politics out of it for us, and it seems like it's a reasonable option to go with, with number one, so I'll, uh, I will go with that recommendation as well.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. It, it does get a little bit more complicated by choosing, choosing and approving who's going to be on this board, um, so, um, to remove the politics and to help out with the time, I think option one is the best option.
And my comment is, is similar to others, that with the timeline we have to go out and notice, recruit, take applications, interview, then come to a council meeting and appoint, we're losing time, and that body needs to be able to meet. And so, I think, uh, we could find ourselves even up against a tighter time limit. Um, I'm with Councilmember Salazar, I would have preferred, uh, committee slash commission, or whatever the term you want to use, but I think due to the timeline and the efficiency factor, uh, one is, is my choice at this time. So, I've heard from four of us that are one, and Councilmember Mason, I know it was one or two, what, where do you fall?
Yeah, I mean, I think most of us think, uh, commission is best approach, but, um, but the reality is that, you know, under our strong governance, we are committed to reviewing all of our commissions and committees anyway. And so, I don't know that now is the time to add a commission when all the, all the meetings are going to be public, there's going to be opportunity for public engagement, and ultimately, the map will, will come to us. So, I'm, I'm fine with number, with number one.
Okay, so at this time, and council will correct me, I hear a five zero. It's not an official vote, but a dissection is what we're being asked for, so all five council members and mayor, uh, and vice mayor have directed staff to please go with selection one. City manager, is that clear?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
No problem. Appreciate that, and like I said, I think all of us would agree, there was a lot of information, but did a really good job in the presentation and PowerPoint and getting it through all that. Is there any other action or, um, items that are needed on this topic? City manager?
No, uh, no other actions, uh, needed.
Okay. Uh, colleagues, if there's nothing else, then I'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the seven o'clock, and you'll have a, a little bit of time to take care of whatever needs to be taken care of. So, with that said, we'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 6:40 PM from this, uh, special meeting. Meeting adjourned, we'll see you at seven. Meeting adjourned, we'll see you at seven. We'll start in just a minute. Good evening, good evening, everyone, and I want to welcome everyone to the San Bruno City Council meeting of September the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. We will call to order, we'll call, please.
Council member Hamilton?
Here.
Council member Mason?
Here.
Council member Salazar?
Here.
Vice mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. And we're very fortunate this evening, and he is graciously, well, uh, our state senator will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Senator.
Will you join with me while we do the pledge of allegiance? I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. Uh, we're going to move to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff or investigation, and where appropriate, the Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter agendaized, so it's state law. If there's any folks, if you can raise your virtual hand at this time, and I'll ask the city clerk to bring you in, please.
Yes, but first is Stephen Seymour or Sandra Perez-Bergis.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, it's Stephen. I just wanted to inform the San Bruno, uh, community that, uh, we're busy opening up uh, an art, well, art zone in Tanfran for the purpose of providing, uh, the community with, uh, a, a, a local, uh, gathering place, uh, for artists and those who are interested in art. Very, uh, soon, uh, we'll be teaching, uh, wood sculpting classes. Ruth Waters, who is an acclaimed, uh, sculptor, she's been sculpting since nineteen fifty-seven. She's a graduate, uh, nineteen fifty-five graduate of Stanford, and, uh, she has shown her work all over the country. Um, we're very, um, proud to have her, uh, on site. Um, she is exhibiting, uh, many, many pieces of her work, uh, and, uh, will be teaching students, uh, in Tanfran how to sculpt hardwood from, uh, basically branches and, uh, the stumps of trees. And eventually, we'll be teaching, uh, uh, oil painting, drawing classes, and mural painting classes on site. Uh, there will be two locations. The first location, we're, uh, in the midst of, of opening it up. Today you can walk through it, there's not much activity there, but it's on the second floor, um, outside of Target. And I'd like to thank, uh, council member Hamilton and council member Mason and vice mayor Medina, who have already stopped to show their support. And I'd like to invite, uh, mayor Medina and council member Salazar to, uh, stop by at any time. Um, Ruth happens to be on site most days right now, getting things ready, but the doors are open, you can walk in, uh, from about eleven to five. We had two weekends where we took part in Silicon Valley Open Studios and saw traffic of a hundred or more over those two weekends. They came in to kind of see what was going on, and there's a huge interest, uh, from fifty percent of the people that walked in, in the art classes, uh, that we'll be holding there and the sculpting classes that, uh, Ruth Waters, um, has brought to San Bruno. Um, so I'd like to invite people to stop by and see what's happening, and, um, the larger part of it will all be happening, uh, later this year and early next year, but please stop by, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments, and it's good to hear. I know I saw it before, uh, it opened, but report. Um, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jennifer Blanco. I'm not going to try to...
Why don't we go to the next speaker and we can come back?
Um, I see her, I think, yeah, we're turning around, here she is.
Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you so much, hi. Well, thank you. Uh, good evening, council members, staff, and members of the community tuning in tonight. At the September seventeenth meeting, where mayor Medina was censured, I raised my hand to speak on the censure resolution written during the meeting as it was a new item introduced. I have a couple of points here. One, I was not allowed to speak as my raised hand was ignored. This was a violation of the Brown Act, not allowing the public to speak, which is the right of the public. I had the right to speak before or during the consideration of an item. My right to speak during the consideration of an item was violated. Council member Medina, I do truly believe and think you were very ill-prepared to facilitate that meeting. Point two, as an elected official of the San Bruno Park School District and who was censured last year on June twenty-fourth, I really hope you were not looking to us aboard and using as an example of how and why to censure one of your own. If you think by censuring one of your own was and is going to bring you to work together as a cohesive group, guess again, because of division within this group, it's just going to continue. It did on the Board of Trustees, the division just got worse. Many of us out here, including myself, questioned the way the censorship was facilitated. Point three, since the mayor's behavior was the focus, did it ever occur to any one of you to ask him why he behaved this way? Did your staff ask him why he behaved this way? Or did the investigator ask him why he behaved this way? I'm just really curious to know. I ask these questions because knowing this behavior was out of character, it is clear as day for me that that's where the problem lies, but it's apparent you all are choosing to ignore the why, which I find very interesting. As parents, when our children display undesired behaviors, what do we do as parents? We get to the root of behavior, right? Come on, you guys, this is basic E C E one oh one, that stands That stands for Early Childhood Education, for those of you who don't know. They offer it at Skyline College. This was a political stunt, let's keep it real. If you think censuring Mayor Medina is going to prevent him from running in the next election, think again. After my censure, I ran again, and I received close to 9,000 votes. Have a good and a productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Jeffrey Tong.
Good evening, San Bruno councilmembers and mayor. At the 5:30 special meeting this evening, city attorney mentioned that a city charter must be elected during a regular election. And I would like to know if there is a primary election in March or April or the spring of next year to put a city charter on the ballot prior to November of 2022. I believe a city charter would give the San Bruno people a lot more options than simply a district election. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Paul Lipinski.
Good evening. I wasn't able to attend the meeting just before this, but I've just got a question that I'd like to have answered sometime in the future. If we go to district elections and nobody in the district runs, what happens then? And then I'd also like to publicly thank Pamela Wu. I had a bunch of questions that she was responsible for on the city staff, and I've never gotten such a great response. I mean, she answered them quickly, thoroughly, and I was just really pleased to have her on the staff, and she did a great job, and I think she should be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and thank you for bringing that to all of our attentions about that. That is very much appreciated. Also, we are done at this time with public comments. We're going to move on to announcements and presentations, and I'm going to take it out of order and go to item B and receive presentation from Senator Josh Becker regarding Sacramento update. As you know, this is our state senator at Sacramento, and I can tell you firsthand that he has been busy, and it's like, you know, you run hard, you win, and then he has been running since and working on quality of life issues. From housing to education, transportation, infrastructure, he's also doing a lot of work on the climate, and I've had a great opportunity to have a one-on-one with him and have conversation, and so I can tell you, he's been busy, he's keeping us updated. And we appreciate him taking his time to be with us this evening, to just give us some updates, and a pleasure to have you. You're always welcome, but State Senator Becker, please, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I'm really grateful to all of you for having me here today. It was a rush, made it sort of just in time, had my water polo game away game up at the brewing game today and at high school, so it was a lot of fun, and made it just in time. So I really appreciate you being with, you know, having me here today. Yeah, Sacramento, it was my first session, and it was a really eventful one. And, you know, as I like to say, when I got elected, we were facing, projecting a $50 billion deficit, and we ended up with a $75 billion surplus. So I feel like I did a pretty good job my first year. And, yeah, it's a little joke, but yes, we did a great job, but we, the question was, how are we going to spend this surplus? And we really spent a lot of our time dealing with budget issues and the issues that we're focused on, work, quality of life, as the mayor said, education, housing, including homelessness, transportation, infrastructure issues. And so that's what I focused on. My very first bill of the governor's side was a bill that was brought to me by the city of Belmont, but it's really on behalf of all of our smaller cities on the peninsula. I represent 23 cities, all less than 150,000 in population. And this bill was to allow smaller cities to team up to compete better for SB1 funds, whereas SB1, this is the highway of funds that came from the gasoline tax. And allow us to compete better on projects like fixing El Camino, which, you know, obviously goes through many of our cities, or other road, shared roads like that. So that was really the intent of that bill, and that was my first bill that the governor signed, and since then, he's been signing more of them, including today, a bill that I had on intergenerational affordable housing. Traditionally, affordable housing has been either, if you fund it, you can only fund it for older folks or for, say, transitional foster youth, right? So people that are quite young and, say, just transitioning out of the system, but, you know, folks of that age. And this will allow intergenerational affordable housing. So at a very contentious issue, this was something that was near unanimous, and the governor signed that today at a ceremony in Oakland along with a couple of other bills, and that was a very fun moment for me. But transportation infrastructure is going to be a big focus, and we do a press conference with Congressman Eschew here coming up in about, in a couple of weeks, to focus on now the federal infrastructure money that's hopefully going to pass very soon. How can we make sure the peninsula gets our fair share? We provide a great amount, about 20%, according to my staff's estimates, of the property tax for the state, and what do we get back from it? Not a lot of support, say, for our transportation needs, whether it be great separation or other regional transportation infrastructure needs. How can we get more of that money here? So that'll be another big focus of mine. And then education, starting everything from early childhood education, where we made a massive investment, it's something I'm incredibly proud of. We went from a situation where California was frankly a laggard, I'd say one of the worst states really on early childhood education, and with this budget, every kid in California is going to get a year preschool, and most long-term kids will get two years of preschool. So really quite extraordinary. We did it in a way that actually works with and preserves the existing structure, which was of, people can have a choice around preschools, and that was another big factor. And then we wanted to raise the wages for childcare workers, which have been way, way, way too low, and allow regional cost adjustments so that workers in this area, which are higher cost, can get paid more, say, than other childcare workers, say, in Riverside or Central Valley. And we were able to accomplish that, very proud of that effort and raise wages in that sector. So a lot of focus on starting early childhood education, the big lift, I was able to procure money directly, a million dollars for the big lift, which is a San Mateo County program that many of you know, which is very focused on preschool, but then also intensive summer programs up to third grade. Because we know that third grade reading level is critical. If you're not reading a grade level by third grade, it's very hard to catch up. Hold on, I'm going to shut the door here, my dog is barking. You know, you know that problem from Zoom meeting. So early childhood education was a big focus, and then K-12 education, record amount of monies for a school. Hopefully, your district is feeling that and feeling some additional funding. I know it's in the midst of difficulty because everyone's stressed that there's not enough teachers, not enough substitutes, but we are providing a lot of additional folk, funding. And I was talking to our superintendent, Nancy G., she said we couldn't even really have opened without that additional funding. So that's a big focus. And then lastly, higher education, both our community colleges and additional money for our community colleges. And as many of you know, I was an adjunct professor at College of San Mateo, but also for CSUs and our UCs, and particularly more spots, people from this area feeling that, you know, we've really gone overboard with too many international students and not enough slots. We opened up 900 additional slots at each of the, at each Berkeley, UCLA, and UCSD, and then more spots overall at all of the rest of the UCs as well. So that really has been a lot of focus. How do we use that, both through legislation and through the budget, to work on those quality of life issues, housing, transportation, infrastructure, education? And I do want to mention, when the mayor and I met, he spoke about, we, he brought me attention of traffic, of trash, and a number of you were also on that mayor, I think the vice mayor was on that communication as well, and the homeless encampments in the same area around, you know, 380 and 280 and the off-ramp. And we immediately went into action and were in touch with Caltrans, which is, you know, a difficult agency to work with, fortunately, we all know that, but they did, they were responsive, and abatement was scheduled. I have not heard if that's been, well, I guess we were talking a little earlier, you said it's certainly better, but I think still work to do, but that's the kind of thing we want to do. I mean, that's, you know, that's what we're here for. So if you see issues like that in your community, please contact my office or contact your city council members here, and they will reach out to us and let us know that there's work that needs to be done, because certainly with Caltrans, we all know, we need to stay on top of them where that work does not get done. So thanks for letting me talk a little about that. Last topic I just mentioned was a climate, as was mentioned earlier, is a big focus, and I will be representing California in the Glasgow in the climate change talks, and it's really a question of how can we do this? How can we move faster? And let's do it in a way that actually helps the economy, that helps create jobs. As we all know, solar costs have gone down 90% over the last 10 years as our state established programs like the Million Solar Roof Initiative. How can we do that for electric homes, for people who want to electrify their homes and other buildings? How can we provide those kinds of incentives so that we can all participate and we can move much, much faster to address climate change, which we have to do? And the droughts and the wildfires were both a sign of that. I've done town halls on both those topics, they're available on my website, and I'm happy to talk more about that as well. With that, I'll leave it there, maybe take a one or two questions if the council has any.
Any quick question of the center, so you can maybe have dinner? If not, you know what? We really want to appreciate and thank you very much for your time, and we know you've been busy. I guess the one question this council will ask, who won?
It was a very, very close game. My daughter goes to Menlo after ten, playing brewing game, down 3-1, came back 1-8-6, so big, big win. That's a very good team as well. There's a lot of good, a lot of good water polo going on. I'm new to the, I'm relatively new to the sport, but there's a lot of good water polo going on in our, in our district.
Well, good, and pass on from the city council, our congratulations to your daughter and her team. But again, thank you for being available. I know that I've never had a problem picking up the phone, and Nicole, who's also here, has been very supportive and helpful for us as well. So again, thank you, but try to get, try to enjoy the rest of your evening, what's left, and appreciate your time and being here with us tonight.
Sure, and just to say the last thing, it was a great honor to be there at the groundbreaking for the new Aquatic Center. That's going to be fantastic, and just, you know, getting hats off to the whole community for rallying and that whole process, and Leslie, my old classmate, Leslie Hatamia, for her work at the foundation, and, you know, just, it was a really, really exciting moment. It's really, really an honor to be with all of you. And that's my first groundbreaking, my first groundbreaking as State Senator.
Well, you came to the right city then, and we appreciate it, Senator, and thank you again kindly.
Okay, take care.
Have a good evening. All right, we'll go back under to announcements and presentations, we'll go up to item A. As of September 21st, 2021, 91.6% of the San Bruno community is vaccinated against COVID-19. The COVID-19 vaccine is free and available without an appointment. Visit myturn.ca.gov or call 833-422-4255. That's 833-422-4255 to find a convenient location near you. And this is listed, but I'm going to add an item, and I just wanted to say I did attend, up in Sacramento, the California League of Cities for the State of California, representing San Bruno. But what also happened there was more important than me being there, was that our city clerk, Melissa Thurman, was sworn in and assumed her new office as president of City Clerks Association for the State of California. So on behalf of the city council and myself, congratulations, and we're here to support you, and I know you'll have your hands full, but I think that's great and well done. So, and proud to have you as the president and representing San Bruno too. Now we'll move on to. You're very welcome. Now we'll move on to consent calendar, which is item five. We have items A through I. Are there any items that a council member wishes to pull for a separate vote? I'm not seeing any at this time. Is there any item that a council member would like to add a question or comment? I'm seeing none at this time. So at this time, is there any action from council regarding items A through I under consent?
To the chair, I will move that we accept the consent calendar. A second.
Motion seconded, Salazar. Hamilton, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Thank you all. Now, we're going to move on to item number six, which is public hearing, and city clerk.
Okay, so this might take me a little bit, it's a very long title, just one moment. Item 6A, hold a public hearing and take the following actions associated with the Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution approving the water supply assessment report for the proposed Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution certifying an environmental impact report in adopting sequa findings, facts, statement of overriding considerations, and the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Bay Hill specific plan and Google Phase One project. Adopt resolution amending the San Bruno general plan to ensure consistency with the Bay Hill specific plan. Adopt resolution adopting the Bay Hill specific plan for the Bay Hill area of the city. Wave first reading and introduce ordinance adding Chapter 12.290, Bay Hill specific plan districts, to the City of San Bruno Municipal Code, establishing regulations for parcels within the Bay Hill specific plan. Wave first reading and introduce ordinance amending the City of San Bruno zoning map for the Bay Hill specific plan area. The end.
Thank you. Good job, yes, that's why she's the president. So on this item, I wanted to first let folks know that all of the council members have received, I'm sorry, there's a hand up in the city manager, city attorney?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we will be taking item 6A and 6B simultaneous and holding those public hearings simultaneous, so the city clerk needs to read in item 6B at the same time. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Okay.
Ready. I can do this. Okay. Item 6B, hold a public hearing and take the following actions to approve Google LLC's Phase One development located in the Bay Hill Office Park. Adopt resolution approving a phased vesting tentative tract subdivision map with lot line adjustments. Realignment of Grundy Lane involving vacation of current public roadway and utility easements and dedication of new roadway right-of-way, and fee and granting of new utility easements, and vacation of a portion of Elm Avenue, as shown on the map, for Google LLC's property in the Bay Hill area of the city. Wave first reading, introduce ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google LLC, a California limited liability company for the Google project located in the Bay Hill Office Park. Adopt resolution approving an architectural review permit for Phase One of Google LLC's development plans in the Bay Hill area of the city. Adopt resolution authorizing various curb marking changes along frontages of 900 Cherry Avenue and 1,000 Cherry Avenue, Bay Hill area of the city, for Phase One of Google LLC's development plans.
Thank you again. At this time, I just wanted to let it be known that the council have received emails on this project. Most that I have seen up until just a moment ago have been in support of the project, and again, there's one on housing that we just received just a short time ago. So I wanted that to be known, that your, the council has received those, it will be part of the record. In addition to that, on item 6A, I'm going to need to recuse myself due to the fact that I live with, in proximity of the Bay Hill specific plan, not the whole project, but just within the boundaries of the specific plan, which encompasses all of Bay Hill. On item 6B, I, there are four bullet points, and the last two, I have been advised by the city attorney. On the last two, I have been advised by the city attorney that I am able to participate and vote, however, due to, you know, the importance of this project, very important project, and how much it's been done and to have continuity. Don't want to create any risk or appearance of voting, not voting on a couple items, but voting on the last two that I was directed. And at this point, I'm going to recuse myself from item six A and six B, and I feel that's in the best interest of the city. So at this time, I will turn it over to Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think we're ready to go to staff.
Evening, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public, both watching on Zoom and at home. My name is Javon Grogan, and I have the pleasure of being San Bruno City Manager. I will begin our presentation today, but I am certainly backed up by an amazing team of both staff and consultants that have worked diligently on this project. I see on Zoom that we have more than three times as many people as normally attends our meetings on Zoom. And there are others watching on the YouTube platform and also streamed via Channel One, the city's government access channel. So welcome all. This is a very important night for the City of San Bruno. We're here today with the request that came in nearly five years ago from YouTube to expand their campus here in San Bruno. As we all know, YouTube's international headquarters is here in the City of San Bruno. And they came in, the first in-house staff meetings were held in October twenty sixteen with YouTube's desire to expand their footprint. And in May twenty seventeen, the city council approved a contract with a planning firm called Diet and Batia to begin the, the planning work on what you have before you, which is called the Bay Hill specific plan. There's a number of actions, ten, the city clerk read through them. We'll touch on them throughout, throughout tonight. I also want to say that there are two public hearings, but there will be one presentation on all of the ten action items in both public hearing items. The public hearing item number one is with regard to the Bay Hill specific plan. And the public hearing number two, the number two is with regard to the YouTube Phase One development. That also includes a number of actions related to the development agreement. It's also important to note that the actions before the city council are in the name of Google. Google is the, the company that owns YouTube. We will use Google and YouTube interchangeably. YouTube is the primary occupant of the buildings that Google owns in the Bay Hill Office Park and intends to be the primary occupant of the expanded campus. But know as we talk tonight, we will use Google and YouTube interchangeably. It is also important, ground setting, to know that while the work that was undertaken for the Bay Hill specific plan was done at request of Google and YouTube and funded by Google and YouTube at a cost of over three million dollars for the, all of the work that has taken place to date, it is extremely important for the, for the public in the city council to know that the Bay Hill specific plan is a city document. It was done at the direction of the city and partnership with various consultants, albeit the entity that paid for all of that work was Google YouTube, but it is very much a city document and was led and directed by the city. So the presentation tonight is very detailed. There are twelve items on our agenda. I'll go over them really quickly. We'll talk about the objective. I'll introduce the Bay Hill team. We'll provide a little background. We will go through the environment, the final environmental impact report and the water supply assessment. We will talk about the necessary general plan amendments to accommodate the additional square footage. We will give a detailed presentation on the Bay Hill specific plan itself, as well as the new Bay Hill plant permit. We will talk about the zoning ordinance and the zoning map amendments that are, are necessary. We will also talk about the Phase One development. And this, when we begin to talk about Phase One, what we mean is Phase One of a five-phase YouTube campus expansion that is envisioned to take place in the Bay Hill Office Park and over the next fifteen to twenty years. The best intended map, the architectural review permit and various curb markings. A development agreement with Google that outlines various requirements for both Google and the city and provides community benefits, and we will talk about that. Final recommendations, next steps, and questions. So the objective tonight, the city clerk read them. I will not read all of these. But again, six A, which is to hold public hearing and take the following actions associated with the Bay Hill specific plan. There are a total of six items under item six A related to the Bay Hill specific plan. Approving the water assessment report and the proposed, for the proposed specific plan. Certifying the final environmental impact report. Adopting a resolution amending the San Bruno general plan to ensure consistency with the new Bay Hill specific plan and adopting the Bay Hill specific plan for the Bay Hill area of the city. Waiving the first reading of an ordinance that will add language to chapter twelve point two nine zero of, that will include Bay Hill specific plan districts within our municipal code and various parcels related to that. And then waiving the first reading to introduce an amendment of the city's zoning map for the Bay Hill specific plan. It's also important to note that this is the first of two action nights for the city council with regard to this proposed development and specific plan. The actions that are on tonight include a number of resolutions as well as ordinances. Ordinances that the city council knows requires two readings. We have planned for that second reading to occur on October twelfth for the two ordinances that you have shown on this screen, as well as two more ordinances that are part of item six B. And these are related to Google's Phase One development located within the Bay Hill Office Park. The first one is a resolution, I'm sorry, there's one ordinance that's part of this. The first one is a resolution approving the phased vesting tentative map, lot line adjustments, and various other roadways, utility easements and dedications, and vacation of portions of Elm Avenue. We'll talk all about this. I know that there are thousands of pages that have been provided to the city council and reviewed by the Planning Commission and various public meetings and, and online. Waiving the first reading of a ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google for this five-phase development. Adopting a resolution approving an architectural review permit for the Phase One of Google's expansion. And lastly, a resolution authorizing various curb marking changes along the frontages of nine hundred and one thousand Cherry Avenue. Bay Hill team introduction. So you have myself, the city manager, you have Mark Zepper Ronald, your city attorney that has spent countless hours on this project, Pamela Wu, our Community and Economic Development Director, who will give a portion of the presentation shortly, Matthew Newbomber, the lead planner on, on, on this effort that has been with this project since twenty sixteen, Heyuan Ritchie, our interim Public Works Director, and Joanna Klock, the Associate Civil Engineer. Supported by a robust team of consultants, this was, this was and is a major undertaking for the City of San Bruno, and we needed to bring in expertise as well as adjunct staff to, to support and manage this process, as well as legal advisors. So available tonight to answer questions from the city council, this is just a summary of the project team, but these are the individuals available tonight. We have Ed Shaffer from Burke Williams Sorensen, our special real estate legal counsel supported various aspects of this project, including the development agreement. Heidi Mickelson from ICF, our EIR consultant. So if we get into any detailed environmental impact report questions, Ms. Mickelson is here. Elaine Castillo from Management Partners, as well as Dan Marks, serving as co-project manager for the bulk of the development of the specific plan, individual with long backgrounds in city government, Elaine being the former Community and Economic Development Director in various cities, and Dan Marks similar, really provided a lot of expertise and, and horsepower for this very long effort. Patrick O'Keefe from Management Partners, again, another project manager, really came on to support the negotiations around the development agreement and that process available tonight. Taylor McAdams from Fair and Pure is our transportation consultant. A lot of transportation information has been provided and maybe talked about. We, we want Taylor available for any questions. Terry Bottomley from Bottomley Design and Planning, a urban design consultant is available. There's a lot of urban design and concepts and architectural terms that I will butcher by tribe, but we'll have someone here to support the city council. And lastly, Jason Moody from EPS, Economic Planning Systems, which was the city's economic consultant on the project. So with that, you do have a fairly elaborate presentation from staff, followed by a brief presentation from the applicant. And then we will take council questions on the presentations and then public comments, and then return back to the city council for deliberations and action. Thank you. I will now turn it over to Pamela Wu, the Community and Economic Development Director for the City of San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Grogan. Good evening, honorable vice mayor and members of the city council. My name is Pamela Wu, your Community and Economic Development Director. Tonight, I have the pleasure with the Bay Hill team to provide you the background. And we'll start with the background on the Bay Hill specific plan. How do we get to where we are today? So back in May of two thousand and seventeen, YouTube approached the city of proposing to co-sign a positional office building in the Bay Hill Office Park, which necessitated a need to provide a comprehensive guidance for the entire ninety-two acres for Google YouTube's growth in the next twenty years. As the plan, as the plan area sits in the center of several major transportation hubs adjacent to Interstate two eighty and three eighty, and it's within miles to San Bruno, Caltrans and Barc Station, it is important that regulatory framework for the properties in a very, in a, in a plan area is well established. As I previously mentioned, the plan, the plan area comprises about ninety-two acres and is, is bounded by Interstate three eighty to the north, two eighty to the west, San Bruno Avenue to the south, and a TCP transacoreal plan area boundary to the east. The plan area does not include the two properties along the intersection of El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. This is an aerial shot, and I'm sure everyone is familiar with this picture, showing the current configuration of the Bay Hill specific plan area. As I mentioned, three eighty is in your backdrop, two eighty is on your right, two eighty is in your backdrop. And the reason Google picked this area is that this, the Bay Hill Shopping Center has been established, the Bay Hill Office area has been established since nineteen seventy, given that this is the city's premier employment hub, where it's home to YouTube, the headquarters, in addition to Walmart dot com and the police credit unit. Within the Bay Hill specific plan area, a total of two point four six million square feet of additional regional office development is proposed. And we're also proposing to maintain the Bay Hill Shopping Center and retail uses that's convenient to the San Bruno community and would be able to accommodate new or extended hotel uses. With a housing overlay, there will be a possibility to provide a total of five hundred and seventy-three housing units. And then it will provide a development design standard for the planning area that will shave an enhanced public ground that provides for transportation and infrastructure improvement. The plan implementation through the adoption of the amended general plan and the new Bay Hill zoning district will clarify use classification and regulation. This is a chart showing you how has city staff and the Bay Hill consulting team spent the last five years. So the journey started right around mid-two thousand and seventeen at YouTube's request to start the preparation of the specific plan. Right around two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen, there were countless public meetings and workshops held with members of public that guided the vision statement, provided guiding principles, and prepared an alternative report that really was a community-driven process. By October thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, city council and the planning commission held the very first joint study session that provided a preliminary direction on the specific plan, options and also policies. Not too long after that, in December of two thousand and eighteen, council also selected specific plan preferred alternative analysis to be included in the draft EIR. Fast forward to July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, city council had the second joint study session with planning commission to get an update of what's going on on the specific plan, the draft EIR, and the proposed Phase One. Who can forget what happened in two thousand and twenty? COVID hit us, but we did not stop working. In July of two thousand and twenty, city council provided direction to staff to incorporate a formulaic community benefit approach into specific plan. Coming over to two thousand and twenty-one, which is a busy year, in January, staff released the draft specific plan and the draft environmental report in January, followed by a forty-five comment review period, where the planning commission received the comments from the members of public in February, and then followed by a, a meeting to the ALUC in March, and also the TSPC committee considered the curb markings in May, where planning commission forwarded favorable recommendations to city council unanimously and on August seventeenth. As City Manager Grogan mentioned, after a long and exhaustive process, close to fires are making, city staff and consulting team worked diligently to embrace the community's vision as identified in the draft specific plan. We're proudly announced to you that we're at the one of the two hearings where city council can formally approve the project. With that said, I am going to turn the table to Elaine Costa Velo, who is the lead consultant from Management Partners, who will walk you through the specifics of the Bay Hill specific part. Elaine, are you on?
I think we were going to do the EIR first.
I am. So sorry, you are right, Elaine. I am looking at the slide, and it says EIR, then I read the wrong. So Heidi Mickelson from ICF is going to do the EIR and also the water supply assessment report. Heidi?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Oh, you can. Okay. Great. Thanks. Um, oh, okay. So thank you, Pamela. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Heidi Mickelson. As staff mentioned, I'm the city's EIR consultant with ICF. I'll be presenting you tonight with a brief summary of the final EIR analysis and conclusions, which includes the water supply assessment. Next slide, please. The EIR consists of a draft EIR and a final EIR. The draft EIR was released on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, for a forty-five day public review and client period. The EIR includes a program level analysis of the specific plan and a project level analysis of the Phase One development. With this approach, the EIR provides the environmental review that is needed under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, to support both the adoption of the specific plan and full entitlement of the Phase One development. This approach also allows the EIR to serve as a program level document that can be used for streamlining future environmental review for projects within the specific plan area. For the program level analysis, the EIR defines two build-out scenarios, the maximum office scenario and the maximum housing scenario. The maximum office scenario assumes that the maximum amount of office space, approximately four million square feet, is developed and no housing is developed within the housing overlay. Conversely, the maximum housing scenario assumes that the maximum number of residential units, which is five hundred and seventy-three, is developed within the housing overlay, and the office density is reduced accordingly to about three point five million square feet. Each topic in the EIR evaluates the impacts of the worst-case build-out scenario for that topic. It's important to note that the city is not being asked to approve either the maximum office scenario or the maximum housing scenario. Rather, these are scenarios that were created specifically for the purposes of the EIR analysis. The actual build-out under the specific plan would likely be a hybrid The actual build-out under the specific plan would likely be a hybrid or a blend of these two scenarios. As required by C Q A, the E I R also evaluates three alternatives, including a no-project alternative, which assumes no changes to existing conditions, a residential alternative, which would allow up to one thousand four hundred and ninety-nine residential units, and an increased height alternative, which would increase allowable building heights on the project site to seventy feet or five stories, and would require voter-approved, a voter-approved modification to ordinance number twelve eighty-four. The increased height alternative, uh, which was studied at the request of council, would allow up to one thousand and seventy residential units. Next slide, please. C Q A establishes four levels of environmental impact. Uh, impacts, uh, where there's no impact, impacts that are less than significant, impacts that are less than significant with mitigation, and impacts that are significant and unavoidable. The term significant and unavoidable is established by C Q A, and the lead agency can only make this finding after identifying and incorporating all feasible mitigation measures and alternatives. In deciding whether to certify an E I R and approve a project, the lead agency's focus is generally on impacts that are found to be significant and unavoidable, or less than significant with mitigation. In the case of the specific plan and the phase one development, uh, several impacts were determined to be less than significant with mitigation, as shown here. These include impacts on air quality, energy, greenhouse gas emissions, hydrology and water quality, and noise. There are other impacts that were thought to be less than significant with mitigation that are not listed on this slide, and those include uh, impacts to utility service systems, and in the case of the phase one development, transportation. Next slide, please. Impacts that were determined to be significant and unavoidable are shown here. All of the significant and unavoidable impacts would result from the specific plan. The E I R analysis found that the phase one development would not result in any significant and unavoidable impacts. The significant impacts for the plan include air quality impacts associated with both criteria air pollutants, which are pollutants that are regulated under the Clean Air Act, and toxic air contaminants, which are localized pollutants that can cause health effects on sensitive receptors, such as diesel particulate matter. It's important to note that the E I R does include mitigation measures that could mitigate these impacts to a less than significant level. These include measures that require developers to pay offset fees for criteria air pollutant emissions that exceed emission standards, and a measure that requires the preparation of project-specific health risk assessments for projects that would emit toxic air contaminants within a thousand feet of sensitive receptors. If these, if these mitigation measures are successfully implemented by future projects, air quality impacts could be reduced to a less than significant level. However, because we don't know with certainty at this time whether the specific offsets uh, that might be needed for any given project would be available, or whether health risk assessments could only mitigate the toxic air contaminant impacts of any given future project, the E I R conservatively concludes these impacts would remain significant and unavoidable. The E I R also concludes the transportation impacts associated with vehicle miles traveled would be significant and unavoidable for the specific plan. This is with the implementation of mitigation that requires tenants to implement transportation demand management, or T D M, programs. In order to have a less than significant V M T impact, a T D M program would need to achieve a forty-three percent drive-alone rate. And while this could be possible for some tenants, including YouTube, which does have a very less T D M program, the E I R recognizes that not all tenants would be able to achieve this level of turf production, uh, and determines that the impact would be significant and unavoidable for the specific plan. Lastly, when an agency approves a project that would result in significant and unavoidable impact, C Q A requires the agency to adopt what is called a statement of overriding consideration. Uh, this is one of the actions for you tonight. The statement of overriding considerations is included in your agenda packet, and it describes the reasons for approving the project despite its significant environmental effects. These can generally include economic and policy considerations, such as job creation and housing development. Uh, next slide, please. Moving on to the contents of the final E I R, the city received a total of eleven comment letters on the draft E I R, including four letters from public agencies, including the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, Caltrain District Four, the S F O Airport Land Use Committee, and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Two organizations, the Sierra Club and YouTube, also commented on the draft E I R, and the city received comments uh, from nine individuals at the February sixteenth Planning Commission hearing. The majority of the comments that were uh, submitted in response to the draft E I R were actually comments on the specific plan, uh, requesting clarification on the specific plan requirements and various other plan details. Chapter three of the final E I R includes written responses to all of the comments received. Some revisions were made to the draft E I R, uh, including some of the mitigation measures, either in response to the comments or as staff initiated changes. These revisions are included in chapter four of the final E I R. All of the revisions that were made to the draft E I R clarified or amplified information in the draft E I R, and do not require recirculation under C Q A. I'll also note here that the final E I R appendices include an addendum to the water supply assessment, or the W S A, that was prepared for the project and included in the draft E I R. The city did not receive any comments on the W S A, but staff elected to prepare the W S A addendum in recognition of the fact that the statewide landscape regarding water supply, as I'm sure you are well aware of, has changed quite noticeably, or notably, since the original W S A was prepared in two thousand and nineteen. The W S A addendum, which is based on the city's draft two thousand and twenty urban water management plan, which is scheduled for approval later this year, confirms the findings of the original W S A, that is, that sufficient supplies would be available to serve the project, including under dry year conditions. Uh, this would be with implementation of the city's uh, water shortage contingency program. The W S A, as amended by the W S A addendum, must be adopted by a separate resolution prior to project approval in order to ensure that the project is in compliance with the California Water Code. Lastly, to certify the E I R and approve the project, council must adopt the required findings under C Q A in the mitigation monitoring program, which includes the final mitigation measures that will be required for development under the specific plan, including the phase one development. Each of these items is also included in your agenda packet. And with that, I will hand it back over to the team to talk about the general plan amendment.
Thank you, Heidi. As Heidi mentioned, the next one, um, in the law order of action is the general plan amendment. And why we're doing a general plan amendment, this is to ensure that there is a vertical planning document consistency. The general plan amendment focuses on the introduction of new land use designation and a new um, zoning district that has been provided in the Bay Hill specific plan. Specifically, we're creating a consistency to make sure that Bay Hill Regional Office and the Bay Hill neighborhood commercial land use districts are documented in the general plan. The general plan has been uh, prepared prior to the adoption of the specific plan. We want to make sure that there are other minor text amendments, uh, that the two documents are consistent. Now I'm going to turn over to Elaine, um, to talk about the Bay Hill specific plan.
When I came on video and the people can hear me, um, Vice Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Elaine Costadello. I'm from Management Partners, and I've been a project manager on this project. And um, I want to start off, the specific plan starts off with guiding principles, and those principles were developed, really built on the work that had been done with the community in two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen, the vision statement, the guiding principles document, the, and, and then later, from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty, there were several meetings with the city council and the planning commission where we also got input. And from that, we developed these guiding principles, and they have really guided the creation of the specific plan, with a focus on a mixed-use walkable district, quality design, enhanced public realm, improving multimodal mobility, relying, in other words, relying less on the car, fostering housing development, which is not currently allowed in the area, integrating the. The plan is organized into seven chapters and a very robust appendix about all of the road improvements. I'm going to go through each of those chapters briefly and give you the highlights of what's in the plan. Next slide, please. Can you, can you hear me, Pamela? Okay.
Okay, what can I hear you?
Okay, great, thank you. Um, really a key, a really key component, kind of a building block of the whole plan, is the office development policies. And this is a uniquely good location for new office development. It's an existing office park, for one thing. It has unusually good access to both regional road transportation and transit. Both BART and Caltrain are easily accessible from the site, um, which is very unusual. And finally, their YouTube has an interest in creating a campus. YouTube owns most of the land in the uh, planning area, in the office part of the planning area, owns ten of the thirteen lots. Um, and it has also had an excellent track record of being able to implement very successful programs to reduce the number of single occupancy vehicles and the traffic that new office development creates. So with all of that in mind, the plan permits two point four six million square feet of additional office, regional office development. That development is allocated on a parcel-by-parcel basis. And as Community Development Director Wu mentioned earlier, we are um, doing this, it's a twenty-year plan, and so we know that things are going to change over that twenty years. So the policies also allow a limited transfer of office development between parcels in order to accommodate any changes that will be needed to take place over time. The next slide, please. So you can see the light orange here is the areas, everything that's shown in light orange is actually designated for office development in the plan. But there is more than just office development. If we can just keep this slide up, I'll go through the next. There's also retail and hotel uses that exist within the plan area. Um, there's an existing Bay Hill Shopping Center, which we heard through all of the public input, was very valued by the community. So the requirement, plan requires that the square footage of commercials be maintained, even if the, um, even if the shopping center is redeveloped, it still has to maintain the same level of retail square footage, which um, is, is one of the policies of the plan. The plan also accommodates new hotel and expanded hotel uses. So another area of flexibility, we did allocate land, allocate square footage by parcel, but we left some square footage, about a hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet, unallocated, and give a priority to new hotel and retail for that use. And finally, I think we can go to the next, well, we can stay on this one, thank you. As you see where there's kind of hatching, residential has not been allowed in this area in the past, and we knew from the work that we had done with the council and with the community, that there was a desire to allow housing in the plan area. So we, the group that worked on, and this was very much of a team effort, the team that worked on the development of the specific plan looked and thought, where is a good location for residential? And the plan recommends that new residential be shown in the hatch areas along San Bruno Avenue, where it's across the street from existing residential. We think that's a good way to integrate new residential with existing residential. So those two residential overlays allow five hundred and seventy-three units. Of that, two hundred and ten can go into the Bay Hill mixed-use overlay at the shopping center, and three hundred and sixty-three can go in along San Bruno Avenue at eight oh one eight fifty-one Traeger and one one one, one Bay Hill Drive. So we're, the plan allows quite, we can go to the next, we can go to urban design, please, which I think is the next slide. Okay. The plan is allowing a lot of development. Um, and so we really, it was a focus of the team to make sure that that development would be successful and would be attractive, and we knew that was one of the, the key objectives. So a lot of, if we can go to the next slide, which I think is a plan of the streets, yes, okay. One of the key things in the plan is to enhance the pedestrian environment. We try, we realize we want people to drive less, to get out of the, to get out of their car and walk around and use a bicycle, um, and so we want to make this an attractive area for people to walk. The big focus of the plan was to make the streets more attractive and walkable and enhance pedestrian environment. There are requirements for street trees throughout so that people can walk in shaded areas in the summer. There are um, planting strips between the pedestrian and the traffic that will also be used for stormwater management. There's um, pedestrian-oriented street lighting, and in some locations, and that's on all streets, and in some locations along Bay Hill, and they're shown with the thicker green line here, along Bay Hill and Elm and Traeger, there's something more, there's something we call greenways, which are continuous publicly accessible, privately owned, and maintain linear open spaces, where people will be able to sit and, and walk, and it'll be an even more enhanced area for the pedestrians. But in addition to these kind of improvements along the street, we wanted to create, the plan also creates some other kinds of other spaces. Very important, at the corner of Grundy and Cherry, there is an existing plaza. That plaza will be redesigned as the Cherry Avenue Plaza, redesigned to make it enticing and inviting to the public, and it will be publicly accessible, but while it will still be privately maintained. In addition, YouTube will have their own private open spaces, interior courtyards, et cetera. There will be a lot of development, and so we paid attention to the building design as well, and the urban design chapter has policies that design features to reduce the impact of large and long buildings, reduce building massing. Remember, one of the really nice features of this plan as it's redeveloped, as the area redevelops, is that the parking will all be underground, so that it will be a more active area than it is now where there are a lot of parking lots. And we tried to really take advantage of that change in the plan. So if we go, if we go forward, I think, maybe one or two more slide, ah, there we go. So just to give you some pictures, some drawings of what this is going to look like, the first one is kind of what, what an, what a, an enhanced pedestrian environment along um, the offices is going to look like, and with that planting strip between the pedestrian and the car with the new bicycle enhancements, and then the wider sidewalks and mixed-use commercial environments, and the buffer landscaping, and prominent building entrances and stoops in the residential environment. To go into it in the next slide in just a little bit more detail, I want to show you kind of what an area, this is actually kind of looking at what Traeger will look like when it's redeveloped. And as you can see, a typical frontage where there isn't a greenway would have a thirty-foot average setback with a ten-foot minimum setback, but it would also have all the things we've talked about, the, the street trees, the curbside planters, the pedestrian-oriented lighting. And on the right side of um, this graphic, you can see a greenway condition, which is larger, and you can see that there's more pathways where people could walk in and sit. And in those areas, there's a thirty-foot minimum width and a sixty-foot for some expanded open space areas, with even more enhanced landscape and pedestrian amenities. So it's going to be quite an active and attractive area. We did build in a little flexibility in the greenway with requirements to, to, again, we're constantly, we're constantly looking at knowing this is a twenty-year plan and there needs to be some flexibility. So that's kind of, that's, that gives us a, I hope gives you a sense of what's happening with the urban design chapter. And when we get to, when we get to the next part, if we can do the next slide. Okay, what are we going to do about access? This is a specific plan. So actually, in a specific plan, this specific plan is very specific. It looks at every road segment, and we'll just show you the areas that are outlined in yellow. There's a lot of detail in the plan about what's going to be done to enhance bicycle facilities along Bay Hill Drive and all of the streets, enhance pedestrian crossings. So for example, there'll be pedestrian beacons, which will make it safer for people to, to walk throughout the area. The area will be much safer for walking than it is right now, and it'll become, it'll become more comfortable, the safety of pedestrians, medians, where people can find refuge, kind of an elaborate term, but basically where someone, if you can't make it all the way across the street, you have a place to, to stand if the light is changing. These are the kinds of traffic control devices, new traffic control device there at the corner of Trager and San Bruno Avenue. Very elaborate, you see changes at the corner of El Camino and Bay Hill. The plan goes into a lot of detail in terms of what should be done with all of the roadways to create the kind of multimodal environment that the guiding principles and that the community has asked for. The next slide, please. We also wanted to look at, how are we going to make it, how is the plan going to make it easier for transit? As we said, YouTube does a, has a very robust program of shuttles. But we wanted to make sure shuttle buses, we want to make sure that, very useful in terms of reducing the amount of, of road traffic, of car traffic, but we wanted to make sure that we, we created an off-site multimodal facility, which will be in Phase 1 between Bay Hill and Grundy, and it will accommodate the YouTube buses off the city streets. And we also are looking at some transit stops. As, as development goes on, we'll be looking at what kind of improvements, and the plan describes the kinds of improvements that are needed to encourage the use of transit, both public and private transit. Also, we do know people will be driving, some people. So we made sure that the plan ensured consistency with the city loading and parking standards for both vehicle and bicycle parking so we won't have the problem of parking in neighborhoods, overflow parking going into neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So we knew that, we've done a lot in the plan to just encourage people to get out of their cars and bike and take transit and walk, but we also have requirements, some of which are dictated by state law and came out of the EIR, which requires that we look at the vehicle miles traveled per capita. And to keep that simple, we'll just say, as Ms. Meckelson from ICF said earlier, we have to get, new development will have to get to a point where 43% of new trips, less, 43% of less of new trips can occur by single occupancy vehicle. The rest of them, the majority, have to use some other alternative tran, public or private transit, car pools, whatever. So that's a pretty high requirement. And we, in the plan, there is a whole system for property owners monitoring the trips, reporting the results. We have a vehicle mile, VMP, monitoring and mitigation plan. And if the property owner does not meet the threshold, the city has the ability to initiate mitigation payments. So there are actually strict, pretty strict requirements to make sure that we are not have, that the majority of people are arriving at this, at the site and out using something other than their own single occupancy vehicle. Next slide, please. And we knew it was important, the general plan has standards about the level of service, the flow of, we know people will be driving. What is the flow of traffic? And how, we looked at, the plan looks at 15 intersections and did studies of the level of service analysis at the AM and PM peak for all 15 of these intersections. From that, next slide, please. We developed a number of traffic flow improvement projects. They're really, a lot of them are focused along San Bruno Avenue and especially the relationship between San Bruno Avenue and 280. But also, we have a signalized intersection at Trager and San Bruno. And another really important thing in the plan is that throughout, at each subsequent, subsequent phase of development, all major signal, signalized intersections, we looked at to optimize signal splits because that can really help, how you signalize, cycle lengths, all that, can help the flow of traffic. So we've included that. And as a result of all of these improvements, next slide, please. Hi, next slide, can you, okay. We did, the plan has a projection of what that's going to mean in the future, in 2040. Remember, it's a 20-year plan. What will be the effect on all of these intersections, of these intersections, of all the improvements and a focus on having people not drive their single occupancy vehicle and use alternatives? What's the likely impact to be? And as you can see, there are intersections, most study intersections will experience more delay in the future. It's minimal, in, at most cases, it's less than 10 seconds. There are places in the morning peak in particular, intersections like Cherry Avenue and Bay Hill Avenue and, Bay Hill Drive and San Bruno Avenue and Elm will have a longer increase in the delay. And there's a couple of cases where, for example, with the Trager Avenue signalization, there'll actually be, once that is put in place, a slight decrease in delay. So we have really, really studied the whole issue of access from all the different modes. The next slide, please. The next chapter in the plan, which we also really carefully studied, take a lot of time on this, was infrastructure improvement. We wanted to make sure that new development will be constructing or contributing their fair share of money to needed improvements to support new development. Next slide, please. So for example, on water supply and distribution, as Ms. Meckelson pointed out, the, the improvements are adequate even in a drought for this project. But there are improvements that will be needed over time. For example, upsizing water mains and adding water storage capacity to meet supply and fire flow requirements. And we detailed all of those in the plan. We also, to try and really worked on trying to reduce the demand for water by new development, by installing and requiring installation of water-efficient appliances and fixtures. Similarly, we paid careful attention to wastewater, requiring hydraulic modeling when relocating main pipelines or, or changing them. And that the wastewater main within Grundy will be realigned. Stormwater was an important aspect. How do we, and the plan requires that every project demonstrate no net increase in stormwater discharge to the public system. That's zero, no net increase, which requires the incorporation of low-impact development design, sustainable landscaping to reduce irrigation and runoff. Put a lot of time and attention into that. The other topics that this chapter covers are dry utilities. We talk about parks, police, fire, library, and schools. The next chapter, next slide, please, is the environmental quality chapter. And here, we, the plan really builds on the work that was done in the EIR. So they, we took many, many, we took the mitigation measures from the EIR and incorporated them into the plan on these topics. Noise to mitigate the impact from the airport freeways, hazardous materials, air quality, greenhouse gases was a, a major emphasis. And so, for example, the plan requires that electrical space and water feeding and solar routes. We spent a lot of time on groundwater to ensure that the existing groundwater is protected. Similarly, archaeological and paleontological resources and a safety that the projects are built in a geo, safe geological manner. Next slide, please. Okay, one of the great things, okay, I'm, I'm biased. But one of the really useful things about doing a specific plan is that unlike a lot of other planning documents, it's, it pays a lot of attention in the specific plan, they're required to pay a lot of attention to what are things going to cost, when are they going to be developed, how is this all going to be implemented, and who is going to pay for it? And so we spent, that's, the implementation chapter is quite robust on this issue. So if we go to the next slide. Okay, the goal of the implement, of the implementation chapter is to ensure that development will pay its own way. We looked at all the infrastructure and service costs. The plan establishes an area development impact fee program for this planning area, the public improvements, capital improvements that will be required, and those are listed below, for a total of 42 million, of which the specific plan area pays about 13 million. We're also requiring the establishment of right-of-way maintenance agreements so that the developers, the property owners maintain the sidewalks and the lighting and the landscaping that they're putting in. And we also identify where we're going to get dedications and easements. Next slide. One of the important things in this specific plan, and this was something that was brought to the city council last July of 2020, is a community benefit program. What we've been talking about in the specific plan up till now is really how are we going to accommodate the needs of the development itself? And this talks about how does this development make a contribution to improving the rest of the community? It goes beyond its specific impacts. So there's a community, the, the council last July authorized the city staff to work on and incorporate a community benefit program and laid out what that, what that program should basically entail. And it applies to that new development, it applies to development that exceeds what's allowed under the existing zoning. And it, the index to inflation, the office will be paying $35 a square foot of gross building space, that's where they're getting additional square footage above the existing zoning, and residential will be paying $10 per net square foot. There are some exemptions for small projects and affordable housing. And the developer, because the implement, because the specific plan has so many community benefits of ensuring that all the improvements that are needed are actually identified and paid for, the developer receives credit for payments to a cost of preparing the specific plan and the EIR. That policy is in the specific plan. Next slide. So the revenues that we estimate from the specific plan develop, from the, we, the, one of the columns here is called Amount Included in YouTube DA. So we know now from the development agreement, which will be covered in more detail later in the presentation, how much YouTube is going to be paying under each of these categories. The area development impact fee that will be a result of this specific plan and is a policy of the specific plan, it's a new program. The citywide development impact fee, which the city already created a few years ago, that will be bringing in, for example, $36 million from YouTube over the life of the project, the affordable housing impact fee, and the community benefits. So that, for example, YouTube over the life of the project, if it's all built out as office, would be contributing 56 million. So between what YouTube will be paying and what's from other developments, the total in today's dollars is $141 million based on maximum office development only. We had to pick one scenario, and that's the one that we use to create these estimates. Next slide, I think that's it. That's it. Thank you, I'm going to turn it back to the staff.
Thank you, like. Can I advance my slide? There you go, there you go. Oh, just so, thank you, like. So we'll be going over the next section, which is the proposed zoning code amendment. So as I mentioned earlier, because the Bay specific plan has introduced a new zoning district and also new development standard, specifically the Bay Hill Regional Office, the Bay Hill Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District, the residential overlay and mixed-use overlay. Part of the project is also to introduce a new zoning chapter in a zoning code that specifically dovetails into the Bay Hill specific plan. And this will provide a consistent development standard for all of the properties, whether they're Google-owned or non-Google-owned, such as the shopping center, so that there is a consistent development standard for future development. As I mentioned, the Bay Hill specific plan loading ordinance will address the unallocated or allocation of new development, transfer of the square footage, will provide setup, hire, lot coverage, minimum lot size, and in addition to building mass, landscaping, light roofing, solar panel, you name it, it's all in the zoning code, in the new zoning code amendment. So with all of the regulatory framework in mind, Google has also proposed to do a, what we call the Phase 1 development project concurrently. And the Phase 1 project will be almost like an expedited construction project. So with the specific plan in place, Google will be able to start construction right away. With that said, the Phase 1 development includes the construction of two three-story office buildings totaling 440,000 square feet and a three-level subterranean underground parking on the surface lot adjacent to existing 901,000 Cherry. There will be a, a total of 1,896 parking spaces provided, which we put existing parking at the 1:1 ratio of 901,000 Cherry. And then all of the new construction will provide a minimum of three space per 1,000 square feet per the parking code for any office use. And all of the outside parking will be accommodated via standard parking spaces or tandem parking spaces or parking, mechanical parking lots. This illustrates a photo simulation of what the two three-story office building looks like. And in the Phase 1 development, Google has also proposed the request of an architectural review permit, a vesting tentative map, as well as a curb marking along Cherry Avenue and also Grundy Lane. Part of that also includes realigning and also strengthening the Grundy Lane. If you saw the map before, it's not a curvilinear ground, Grundy Lane, but it's being straightened. And also, they're, it will be providing a, what we call a off-street multimodal transportation hub for all of the YouTube employees that will be within the plan area. It will also improve in what we call a Cherry Avenue Plaza at the northeast corner of Cherry Avenue. This will be a publicly accessible, privately maintained public space. The picture on the right upper corner is a depiction of the Cherry Plaza area. There will also be curb marking along Cherry Avenue and Grundy Lane for bus stop or passenger loading, as such, to facilitate the different uses in the plan area. Lastly, the buildings located at 1150 to 1250 Bay Hill will be demolished to accommodate temporary parking. And this is a photo simulation provided by the Google design team to give you an idea of what the building looks like going down on Grundy with the two new office buildings on either side, where there are pedestrian enhancement, landscaping, trees, the bridge that's connecting the two buildings, an ideal conceptual drawing. As I mentioned, part of the entitlement includes a phased tentative map. And while we're doing that, the reason for doing it, for doing a tentative map is to realign and strengthen Grundy Road, which affects several parcels that are Google-owned, actually a total of eight parcels that are Google-owned. And also to abandon a portion of L Avenue to give back a portion of L Avenue to adjacent property. This will not result any additional new lot through the phased tentative map. Again, this is the map that was, that has been submitted by the Google design team to show the before picture of the vesting tentative map. There's also another after picture showing the road being straightened and also L Road, the, L Avenue being abandoned. Lastly, one of the many actions city councils asked to take tonight is to adopt a resolution approved of curb markings. So this includes 136 feet of a white curb along Grundy Avenue for passenger loading and 70 feet of white curb for passenger loading along Cherry Avenue next to 80 feet of double curving that is for loading and unloading. In addition to, please excuse the title, 60 feet of the red curb on Cherry Avenue for a Samtrans bus stop, which is being relocated within the same block from the Cherry-Grundy intersection towards the Cherry-Bay Hill intersection to accommodate the bus stop. So the proposed curb markings have gone through TSPC review and received approval in May of 2020. and received approval in May of twenty-twenty-one. With that, I will turn the table back to City Manager Grogan to talk about the development agreement.
Thank you, City Council members of the public. I know it's a long presentation. We are just about done. So I will present a few slides on the development agreement. And we do have a signed copy from the Google Corporation within the package for council tonight of this proposed development agreement. Development agreements, as we know, provide certainty, definition and commitment as to the proposed development. And as to the necessary public improvements required by that development, they also provide clarity on the public benefits to the agency, in this case, the city. In San Bruno, development agreements are very common for large projects such as this that require these two phases. The DA is between the city and the Google Corporation. On the screen, you have various lots, Lot One N, Lot North, and Lot One S on the left-hand side of the screen. And then Lots Two, Lots Three, Lot Four, Lot Five North, Lot Five South, Lot Five East. The lot number is also synonymous with the phase. And so there are five phases as a part of the planned YouTube, Google campus extension. And so phases one, two, three, four, and five. And some of them have various parcels connected to them. The purpose again of a DA is that it provides those long-term approval rights. And it establishes and sets forth the set of regulations. For example, the Bay Hill specific plan, the general plan, the zoning amendments, and all the various codes. The DA that is before you is a DA that has really two terms, a total of twenty years are possible. But the initial term is fifteen years. It provides certainty for the Google Corporation on community benefits, development impact fees, and various other fees. And also includes a prepayment of phases one and two that we'll talk a little bit about, as well as a possible five-year extension, so to go from fifteen years to twenty years, should at that time, phases one, two, and three be completed. And so there is a, a measure of completion that's necessary before that additional five years can be granted. Again, that initial term is fifteen years with a potential for five-year expansion. The DA includes a total prepayment for both phases one and two at the time of the first horizontal permit for phases one, for phase one. That will total fifty-six point two million dollars. That, that amount is, should the city council approve the, all the required approvals tonight and the second reading of the ordinances on October twelfth, it has anticipated that the city would receive that payment in mid-next year, twenty-two. The, the property development, the DA again equals vested rights for the specific plan zoning vesting tentative map, architectural review permit, permits, and various conditions of approval. Little important note, local changes to local regulations will not apply to the project for the term of the DA. Again, the DA provides both certainty, certainty in terms of regulations and, and costs. And the project is not subject to a local moratorium or referendum after the initial period of, of expiration for the DA has expired. Fees, community benefits, you, you saw those figures. Community-wide development impact fees, the area development impact fees that YouTube will pay their portion of for the property that they own. It's important to note that as per the DA, it caps impact fees to our current impact fee, impact fees that we have, but allows adjustment based on an annual inflation index. The developer as a part of the DA again will prepay for phases one and two. Any unused prepaid portions will be credited back to the developer against the next development. That's accommodating for the possibility that the amount of square, the, the, many of the fees are actually based on square, square feet. And so if the developer prepays for phase two, and let's say that drops by five thousand square feet, those prepaid fees will be credited towards phase three. The developer will receive a credit against a community benefit for seventy-five percent of the cost to develop the general plan amendments and the specific plan, well as the EIR. They do not own all the property within the office park, but they will receive a credit for the, the work that has gone into getting us to where we are. Cutting construction materials, there will be localization of a sales tax for all of the building materials and things that pay sales tax and the tax localization here to the city of San Bruno. And so we come to the end of the presentation. There are six items recommended as a part of the public hearing for item six A. I will not read, read through them again. And then four items with regard to item six B. Next steps will be the final approvals of the, of these items in our discussion tonight, followed by a, a subsequent public hearing to waive the second reading of the ordinances. And that is the zoning ordinance amendment adding chapters twelve point two-nine-zero to adding the Bay Hill specific plan zoning district, the zoning math amendment for the Bay Hill specific plan, as well as the, the development agreement. All requires second reading and subject to approval tonight will be scheduled for October twelfth. So that is our staff presentation. We are available for any questions. It is the decision of the Vice Mayor. We do have the applicant, Google slash YouTube geared up to give a presentation. We can have that presentation now and then take a pause after that, or based on the council's desire, take a pause now and then have that presentation after a pause.
Council members, anybody have a preference? Councilman Hamilton?
I think it would make sense to, first of all, about having a pause, I think, I, I'm fine to keep going. The, as far as, I, I think it would probably make sense to get the YouTube presentation first before opening up for questions, because we may ask questions that are answered in that second presentation, which is my suggestion.
I agree. A nodded head? Nodded head, excellent, okay, let's go.
So Drew Sherwood and Doc Pinner from Google YouTube are, have appeared on the screen and we'll turn it over to Drew Sherwood.
Great, thank you, City Manager Grogan. Before we get started, just a, a little bit of housekeeping to help everyone follow along. And there we go, beautiful. So we're just going to direct people to, to view my colleague Samantha's screen. So this is great. All right. Well, good evening. My name is Drew Sherwood and I lead the Global Real Estate and Workplace Services for YouTube. And on behalf of our CEO, Susan Wojcicki, and all of the YouTubers who eagerly look forward to getting back to their offices in San Bruno as soon as it is safe to fully return, thank you for this time this evening to speak with you. You know, in two thousand and six, YouTube was just a small internet video startup. And they left their rented offices located above an Amici's Pizzeria in San Mateo. And they moved to San Bruno in the Bay Hill office complex that you see in this photo on your screens tonight. Now, this decision was not a cavalier choice made late at night watching funny cat videos on the YouTube platform. Moving to San Bruno was a strategic business choice. It was a choice that was only possible because decades ago, San Bruno had the foresight to create a land use plan that led to the development of the Bay Hill Office Center. And the smart planning decision concentrated office-focused development immediately next to the convergence of multiple freeways, major public transportation hubs like Bart and Caltrain, and an international airport. And over the years, this area has attracted numerous Fortune 500 companies to San Bruno. This is an ideal location for office development. Now, as we all know, YouTube thrived after moving to San Bruno. And today, we are proud to be the world's leading media company, where we give everyone a voice and show them the world. But we had a real problem. We were proud to call San Bruno home and we wanted to stay. But we were running out of space to grow. So over four years ago, I had the privilege of standing in a room full of San Brunans at the senior center and sharing with the community, the city council and city staff, that YouTube wanted to work together. Not just to build new buildings, but we wanted to create an opportunity where San Bruno would thrive as YouTube continued to grow. And that night, together, we all initiated the Bay Hill specific plan. Now, if I could see the attendees on this virtual call, I would probably recognize many familiar faces who have been on this multiple-year journey with us. And to all those members of the community, I want to say thank you. Thank you for the constructive feedback you've given us along the way to improve the project over these past several years. To city staff and all of our consultants, under the leadership and guidance of City Manager Jovan Grogan, thank you for the thousands of hours of work on the Bayle specific plan. And to the esteemed members of city council, thank you for your leadership to ensure that what was important to this community was always in clear focus. Our YouTube development team this evening will share more about the opportunity created by the Bayle specific plan. A plan that from YouTube alone will generate a hundred and thirty million dollars of revenue, including community benefits, development impact fees, affordable housing funding, and the potential to generate thousands of jobs across a wide range of industries. And at a time when so many communities are struggling due to the prolonged pandemic, we could not be more excited about the future for everyone in San Bruno. So now allow me to introduce you to Josh Portner, who leads our YouTube development team.
Thank you, Drew. Honorable city council members, city of San Bruno staff, and members of the community. Would like to take a moment to echo Drew's sentence. Since that first engagement with the city of San Bruno and members of the public, our development team has been given the opportunity to partner with the San Bruno community. And I too wish to thank all the participants in this process. Being in real estate development for YouTube has many benefits, but the one I personally enjoy the most is our community-based approach for creating place in the built environment. While other real estate developers are sometimes focused on other drivers, our main focus is on the user. At times, that user may be our own employees, but it is also the community of San Bruno and other stakeholders that will engage with our place, whether directly by walking through the Bay Hill complex or using Cherry Plaza, or indirectly through engagements with YouTube employees, shopping at Molly Stone's, or waiting for a table at a restaurant on San Mateo Avenue. In addition, designing for the user forces us to create a built environment that is mindful of the major issues at hand, including water conservation, climate change, and addressing housing needs, which you will hear more of in our presentation. In realizing the vision for our built environment with the specific plan, we have been collaborating with a world-class design team, including shop architects, who you will hear from tonight in realizing that design vision. The city council's potential approval vote tonight would be a huge milestone toward realization of needed growth here in the city we call home. Staff has already clearly presented the Bay Hill specific plan and associated environmental documents and zoning updates. So our team has put together a presentation focused mainly on YouTube's first phase of development proposed under the new Bay Hill specific plan aptly named Phase One. Next slide, please. Our team has thought about all, how all our sites work together from an architecture, infrastructure, transportation, and building system perspective. And while this evening, we will not take a deep dive into the entire campus as much of it is purely conceptual, we wanted to take the opportunity to show how Phase One connects to the larger planned campus. Next slide. Staff and consultants have spent countless hours putting together a robust and thoughtful process to develop the package you see before you tonight. Along the way, we've gained intimate knowledge and gotten amazing feedback from the community that we have incorporated into the plan. This feedback includes information received from the planning commission roughly a month ago, when they unanimously recommended the project to city council. I'd like to take a moment and thank all the commissioners for their thoughtful comments that evening. Next slide. YouTube views public benefits as a synergy of three elements: baseline city development impact fees, community benefits, and YouTube benefits. The monetary portion of these elements equates to a hundred and thirty million dollars over the lifetime of the project to the city of San Bruno. Next slide. As missioned by City Manager Jovan Grogan, YouTube has agreed that when we begin constructing the foundations for Phase One, we will issue to the city both the fees for Phase One and prepayment for Phase Two. You can see those two projects combined fees here for a total of fifty-six point two million. Next slide. As we move forward into construction of future phases, YouTube will make payments based on the new square footage in each phase. In an effort to be clear on the future opportunity, we have summed up the monetary benefits on this slide. Their sum total being seventy-four million dollars. Next slide. In addition to the over twenty-five million dollars in payments to the San Bruno Affordable Housing Fund over the lifetime of the project, YouTube is extremely proud of Google's commitment to the regional Bay Area community to assist in addressing housing needs. We have introduced city staff to the Google Housing Fund Manager and will be looking for opportunities for additional partnerships in San Bruno during our construction of the Bay Hill project. Next slide. As a public school graduate and a parent of two school-aged children currently in San Mateo County Public School District, public schools are near and dear to me. As part of each construction project, an additional fee is paid to both the San Mateo Union High School District and a larger portion paid to San Bruno Park Elementary District. For the entire specific plan area, YouTube will fund over one point two million dollars to San Bruno schools, of which eight hundred thousand goes directly to San Bruno Park Elementary. In addition, I'm extremely excited to announce that just this morning, YouTube paid almost a hundred and ninety thousand dollars to San Bruno schools for our active construction project at fourteen-hundred and fourteen-fifty Bay Hill, of which a hundred and twenty-six thousand will go to San Bruno Park Elementary. In addition to the monetary fees going directly to the San Bruno school system, having YouTube in your school's play area provides opportunities for partnership. Just a few of those partnerships that we've done over the years can be seen on this slide. In fact, I understand that the hundred thousand helped fund twenty-four San Bruno childcare centers. Next slide. In addition to development fees, YouTube has engaged an economist to complete a fiscal analysis of additional benefits that the entire project brings to the community of San Bruno. All these elements will provide direct and indirect benefits. Both the sales tax and annual tax increase will go directly to the city's general fund. And we expect the local expenditures to help the city's continued growth trajectory. Next slide. Finally, the project expects, expects to assist with a myriad of issues that are among the city's top items, including replacement of aging infrastructure at Bay Hill and elimination of climate-changing greenhouse gas emissions. At this point, I would like to introduce a member of my team, Samantha Fries. Samantha is the development executive in charge of our active construction project at fourteen-hundred and fourteen-fifty Bay Hill and will also lead the Phase One team. Samantha.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you and good evening. As Josh mentioned, I'm Samantha Fries, the development executive for fourteen-hundred and fourteen-fifty Bay Hill Drive. And with your approval tonight, Phase One- And with your approval tonight, Phase One of the Bay Hill specific plan. Many of you have seen the construction work going on at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill, which started last year. We're so grateful that we were able to work with the city to start this exciting project during a difficult and trying time for so many. Over the last year, we've seen as many as 170 people working onsite on any given day and in early 2022, we'll see that number almost double. Through partnership with our contractor McCarthy Builders, we've been able to maintain a clean and safe job site while offhaling over 150,000 cubic yards of soil. In fact, in a single day, we had 60 trucks offhaul over 400 loads of soil. And we've been working really hard to ensure that there are minimal impacts to you, our neighbors. Earlier this year, we submitted our $4.5 million public benefit payment to the city and we're thrilled that it was able to be used for the new rec center. With your approval tonight, we can move forward with Phase One of the specific plan with the same high standards that we've implemented for 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill. And now a little about Phase One. Phase One consists of two buildings totaling 440,000 square feet. We'll be increasing our tree count onsite by over 250. We'll install over 800 kilowatt solar panels to provide onsite electrical generation and operate as fully electric buildings, eliminating the use of fossil fuels. In addition to the buildings themselves, I'd like to highlight some important features that are part of our Phase One project. With Phase One, we will also be delivering our multimodal transportation hub, which can accommodate up to four shuttles at a time and is nestled away from the public roads. We'll deliver over one mile of public bikeways for San Bruno's walk and bike plan, provide over two acres of accessible public space, and we'll upgrade over four acres of infrastructure and roads. Can't tell you how excited we are at the prospect of starting another project here in San Bruno and I hope that our presentation tonight makes that clear. I'm now going to turn it over to Chris Sharples with Shop Architects, who will speak more about our design and our commitment to sustainability.
Thanks Samantha. The framework for how we really began to think about the concept of place making is really grounded in Google's principles of place. Really focusing on community, innovation, nature, and economics. Next slide please. So starting with the existing context, which is mainly a car-centric environment, really transferring to a place that can really promote the pedestrian and the bicycle and experience. Next slide please. And extending that also to the architecture, which currently is quite scaleless and the hardscape, so really bringing landscape and a sense of human scale to this context. Next slide. So how could YouTube new buildings support a great public realm experience? Next slide. So really looking at examples within the area where bicycles and pedestrians and landscape and the scale of the architecture work together to create an incredible public realm experience. Next slide please. Where the buildings actually create relationships within the landscape, pockets of space, and breaking the scale of these buildings down using fenestration or materials and landscape to really, again, add to a sense of delight. Next slide please. And so this is a view looking down on Phase One and I want to bring your attention to the way that the building addresses itself to the street. You create these moments of open space along the greenway. Again, pocket parks, places for people to gather and collect as they move along pedestrian path on Bay Hill and Grundy. You also see the amount of solar panels and skylights that we have on the roof of this building, really helping to create a really environmental, strong environmental strategy for these two buildings. Next slide. And so this is sort of a close-up of just a part of the building, sort of describes some of these components. You see the green buffer between the road and the bike path and then beyond that, the pedestrian. So really using landscape to really create these nice soft buffers between these different programs and at the same time, drawing the landscape into these pockets where people can actually collect, where there would be benches and possibly artwork. And allowing that vegetation to actually become part of the architecture of the building. So in a way, really trying to create this sort of true green experience as you move up Bay Hill and Grundy. Next slide please. So this is a view on Bay Hill, you're looking up towards Cherry and you really start to see how that landscape really plays an impact on really framing that building, but at the same time seeing the pedestrian way and the bike way along Bay Hill. So really, what we believe will be an incredible pedestrian and cycling experience for people moving this way. Next slide. And then this is a view on Grundy. You've just left the intermodal hub, which is, would be directly to your left and you're walking up towards the entrances into the two buildings. Again, nature and landscape play a big role here in really framing this view and what we believe will be quite a delightful experience for pedestrians. Next slide please. And the other important thing about this project, and Samantha brought this up, was the goal here is lead platinum and we're doing that on many different levels. Again, not utilizing fossil fuels, really relying on electricity, as I mentioned PVs on the roof. The skylights will improve the interior likewise so that we don't have to rely on electric lights all the time. And at the same time, you know, utilizing battery storage to help allow us to continue to operate these buildings at night. Next slide. The other important factor here is water efficiency. Just with proper fixturing, we can reduce water usage by 17%. And as time goes on with the introduction of the infrastructure for recycling water, we're going to be looking at a overall 52% reduction in terms of water efficiency for these projects. The thing that though we believe is going to be really important and this really ties to the public realm is the role of biophilia in landscape and how we not only introduce that on grade, but actually how we bring it up into the building. And as mentioned, you know, bio retention, green roofs to really reduce the amount of stormwater that would impact, you know, the city sewers. Next slide please. So one last area, you know, as mentioned earlier, another part that we're developing for this phase is at Cherry Plaza at 1000 Cherry. Next slide. And here, this is a much more scaled space. Really a wonderful moment for people to sort of come off of Cherry and take a break and relax in this beautiful pocket park. Next slide is a view underneath the trellis and really starting to appreciate, you know, what this space can be throughout the year. It's a great place for people to sort of hang out, collect, maybe have lunch. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Josh and he can talk a little about the transportation system.
Thanks so much Chris, really exciting stuff. Next slide please. To align with YouTube's robust transportation demand management plan, the project team has committed to complete a multimodal center with the Phase One construction, which you can see its location on the plan here. The center will allow all of YouTube's shuttle drop-offs and pickups to be completed on YouTube property. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, YouTube will employ a robust transportation demand management program using a myriad of elements to continue to shift demand over time from single occupancy vehicles to active modes and shared resources. At this time, this program has allowed us to reduce our needs for single occupancy vehicles to just 43%. Next slide. We have our entire design and development team with us tonight to answer any questions you might have. And I'd like to close by saying thank you for your time and your participation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager. The preference going forward?
Well, that concludes both the staff presentation and the applicant presentation. I think given that nine o'clock, it may be best to take a short break. Come back with any questions from the council and then go into a public comment before discussion and deliberation followed by action.
Excellent. Let's take a five-minute break and be back here at 9:05. Just wait another minute, I think. Got a couple more people need to get to the room or back to their screen. Okay, got all our council members back. Let's resume the meeting. And council, it's our time to ask questions. And who would like to go first? Seeing no hands. Uh, to the chair. I'm sorry, I don't have the hosting ability right now, so.
Gotcha.
Council and supervisor.
Right, so I just wanted to start by saying that this is a very exciting project and as Drew mentioned earlier, it's been many years in the making and there's been a lot of public input, a lot of conversations around this and so it is nice to finally be at this point. We were reminded by the city attorney earlier that because of the nature of the actions we're taking today that we do have to disclose prior conversations around this. And so I wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little bit about my interactions related to this project and working with YouTube and Google over the many years. And we have had very many conversations over that time period, some related to this project and some not. Most of the conversations that I recall having with the team very early on in the process, it was still a concept at the time and you know, one of the things that we have to disclose is, you know, the nature of those conversations and whether they differed in any way from the public information that was presented here tonight. And I just wanted to confirm that during none of, not during any of the conversations that I've had that we discuss anything other than the information that's been disclosed publicly. Information that was. that was obtained from public input, and most of it really had to do with procedural things and sort of monitoring how things were moving through the process and making sure that we were doing things according to the city's process, and so that's my disclosure in terms of my contact with the team.
Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss or disclose ex parte communications? Go ahead, go ahead, Bart. I'm saying this out of that, I apologize.
Okay, so through the chair. As everyone knows, I've only been on the council since last December, so this cake was mostly baked by the time I, by the time I baked. I was in the audience at that original meeting way back in 2017 when we started, when the, when this process was officially started, so as a private citizen. But I have, I have had a few, a few meetings as, during the course of, of, since I've been on council, and at no point was I presented with or did we discuss any information that wasn't later confirmed in a staff report. So there was no, and the conversations never, never strayed from the topics that were covered tonight and in other public meetings. I will just, another, I just, I do want to thank the city team and the YouTube team and all the consultants involved in the massive amount of effort that it took to get to this point, and this is, I echo my colleague, Councilman Salazar's comment that this is a, this is a, this is a great day. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton. I don't see Councilwoman Mason yet returned. I'll go ahead and go next. Yes, I'd like to acknowledge the effort from everybody, from staff, from the YouTube staff, the consultants, and the public in participating in this long deliberate procedure of getting us here tonight. It's a really big deal. As noted in the staff report, we've had a number of meetings with YouTube in public, and we've also, as a council member, had meetings with YouTube and staff to discuss various parts of the project as we're going through the process and phasing of getting to where we're at. I also been on two recent tours of YouTube, once with Fire Chief Delay, and kind of going over what the new development there at the end of Bay Hill, and I also went on a tour with the YouTube staff a couple of weeks ago. Again, like my colleagues, my decision is based on the facts here in the public record. There were a few emails going back and forth between YouTube personnel in regards to setting up meetings, but, and availability to go to meetings, but everything that I'm basing my decision on is here, here where it should be in the public. So I'm looking at the screen and seeing Councilwoman Mason is, has yet returned, can somebody check on that? Staff? Oh, there she is. Sorry.
Hi. I'm here. Yeah, I would just echo the disclosures around being with YouTube. I too had a walkthrough with Chief Delay, and it's probably one of the cleanest construction sites I've ever seen, and then more recently YouTube invited each of the council members for a walkthrough with some of the individuals that you saw tonight, so it was an opportunity for just, I guess, some questions that we may have had. Most of the questions were already part of the planning commission meeting, which I took the time to review and watch this weekend, and they were, you know, all the decisions that I'm making tonight are based on the staff report and the presentation we just heard, but I want to thank everybody, including our staff, for their professionalism through this process and just being available for any questions that arose. Thank you.
So, City Manager Grogan, I think.
Through the chair. I'm sorry, being, I have one additional comment. I just want to make a quick, before we go to public comment.
Sure, of course.
I just want to make a comment regarding, regarding housing. As everyone knows, you know, we're, we're phasing a housing crisis across America and in California and here in, here in the Bay Area, San Bruno is on the, is, you know, we committed to do our part to address it, and while it's true that the, you know, there is a housing overlay, there are options for 500-some units as part of, as part of this plan, I want to make it clear to folks who may be, who may be watching that this is a, this is an office park, and the, our commitment as a council and as a city to affordable housing is, and to affordable housing and housing in general, is not changed by this project, and in fact, a project like this provides us with an economic engine. It provides us with both one-time and ongoing revenue so that we're able to provide housing, you know, elsewhere in the city, and I just want to make sure that people understand that by supporting this, this project of replacing an old office park with a much better one does not in any way dilute our commitment to providing housing, meeting our needed numbers, and helping to address this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hamilton. Would someone want to start with questions?
Through the chair?
Sure.
I don't have any questions specifically, but are we going now to public comment, or are we still on council questions?
Based on some information that City Manager gave me, I, we can go to public comment if we'd like to now. It was set up to go to council questions, but City Manager Grogan, any issue with going to, to the public?
No, no, no issue with going to public comment now, Vice Mayor. We typically allow for council members to ask questions on the presentation. If there are no immediate questions, or if the council would like to hold, then we go to public comment, and we can do that right now. It's also important to close the public hearing. City Attorney, do you want to address that?
Sure, Mr. Vice Mayor.
You're muted, City Hall.
I heard the first part of it.
The appropriate thing now would be to open the public hearings on both items 6A and 6B, receive any and all public comment that might, might be offered, and then close both public hearings with one motion, and then bring it back to the council for either questions and/or deliberation. And just as a reminder, each of the actions will require a separate roll call, so that, you know, that we can assist you as well as the clerk, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, definitely will need that assistance. There are 10 different items here and many ways of reading, so let's open up to public comment, or open the public hearing.
Through the chair, one more procedural question. I was, since we have a lot of attendees and I'm starting to see a lot of hands come up, I'm wondering if we could just pause to get an estimate and see, ask everyone who's going to speak to raise their hand now so that we can get a count, and that way we can determine if we need to adjust the amount of time per speaker so that we don't end up running too late, and it looks like the numbers, number of hands has been growing steadily since I started speaking.
Excellent. Let's see, City Clerk, can you give me a hand with that? I'm looking at the, oh, there you go. Here's the list.
We currently have 14 hands raised, but yes, it is climbing. 14.
14 at three minutes each would be putting us at 14, 3, 52.
42.
42.
Yeah.
So typically, if people are repeating the same comments, it would probably be easier to say, yeah, I also in favor of the project or if there's anything new to add, but.
Okay.
I think we're okay with 14 times 3.
Yeah, I think, I think that's reasonable, and I think maybe not everyone will use their full three minutes. I was concerned that with 56 participants, if everybody wanted three minutes, then that, that could get a little crazy, but I think the 14 is probably manageable, so no concern.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, let's start.
First is James Ruwa Gomez.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor Medina, Honorable City Council Members, hardworking city staff, presenters, you guys did an excellent job, and members of the public. My name is James Regulman, I live at 1861 Donner Avenue, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Samatayal Building Construction Trade Council. The Samatayal Building and Construction Trade Council is comprised of 25 affiliates and 16,000 highly skilled men and women in Samatayal County, many of them which live here in San Bruno. Some of them are probably on the call today. If they raised their hands and then lowered their hands, the city council and staff will get a number of how many folks are here that I'm speaking on behalf of. Well, we are excited about this project, and we've been involved in this project back to 2017 to those community members. We are proud to announce that we are in full support of this project and in full partnership with YouTube, Google. We have a community workforce agreement, which is also known as Project Labor Agreement, for the project that is currently being worked on here in San Bruno, and we have a commitment to negotiate another community workforce agreement for this project. Community workforce agreements follow the Working Families Platform, and they are community benefits by hiring local contractors, there's local workers, local apprentices, returning veterans from our military, and we are proud that these thousands of jobs that they are going to create will follow the Working Family Platform, earn a decent wage, and even though we earn a decent wage, half our earnings are spent on rents and mortgages, healthcare, not only for the worker but for their family, and that healthcare includes optical and dental. Retirement, our retirement dollars go into the stock market as safe investments, back into municipal bonds so we could rebuild our infrastructures. And education, we fund one of the largest privately funded education systems in these United States to ensure that these buildings will be, will be built right the first time, on time, and on budget. We, I cannot say enough about Google, YouTube for a commitment to this partnership. Many private developers will not make this commitment to the Working Families or the Working Family Platform, and we are excited that Google, YouTube will, does, and will make that commitment to us. So in closing, let me just say that we're in full support of the Planning Commission's recommendation to approve, and I'm proud to be a resident of a city with a heart, and now let's show our community that we're also smart by approving this project and receiving those funds and building dilapidated buildings into 21st century buildings that are energy efficient. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next is David De La Torre. One moment, I'm trying to get it, Mr. De La Torre, unmuted.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, council members. My name is David De La Torre. I work for the Labor Union, Local 261, we're a building construction trade affiliate. I represent over 5,000 members throughout the peninsula and north Marin Counties. I would like to send a letter of support for this project. Projects like this help us, help our members piecemeal their, their, their retirement, their healthcare, and then provide them with the, provide them with the hours to support their family, but aside from that, I'm calling, I'm calling in as a, as a resident. I am a lifetime resident. I live on the 900 block of Hensley. I've seen that the Bay Hill Park office area dormant for some time. I know some of the buildings were partially vacant since Facebook has taken over, YouTube has taken over the, the area. It has definitely flourished, it has improved, and I call in again just to voice my opinion of the support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rich Koenig.
Hello, are you there?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Mayor Medina and council members. First of all, thank you for your service to San Bruno. My name is Rich Koenig. I am a current and lifetime resident of San Bruno. I'm also the business representative for the Sheet Metal Workers Union, Local 104. We support this proposal tonight. We believe this project will benefit the local community and the city of San Bruno. We believe this project will stimulate the local economy by providing good middle-class union construction jobs with living wages, health, and retirement benefits for our members that live in Samatayal County and also our members that live in San Bruno, because we dispatch our members from, our South San Francisco is our dispatch for our members. And this project will ensure sustainable career pathways, as James mentioned, into union construction apprenticeships and provide training programs for local youth. For example, I graduated from Cappuccino High School, and I've had a great career, about 35 years with the Sheet Metal Worker Union. And I wanted to add that our programs, our apprenticeship programs offer a direct entry, a certain percentage for United States military veterans, and also for graduates of the Trades Introductory Program, which is held up at College of Samatayal. And so I'd like to lastly add that we, the Local 104 and the Building Trades have a long established, successful relationship with Google, YouTube. We're currently working on their projects, a couple of projects in Bay Hill at this time. So we've been a great partner with YouTube, Google, and they've committed to this partnership. So for these reasons, we urge this council to join the Samatayal County Building Trades and approve this plan tonight as proposed. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next is, next is Paul Penske.
Good evening. I don't like the housing part of this. If you, if you go for the maximum units, you're going to have over 1,000 units within a quarter mile of each other between the Bay Hill project and the Mills Park project, and that's just going to be way too much congestion. So I think you really need to think long and hard about approving that many housing units in this small amount of area. The second thing is if you're going to reduce traffic by 43%, or not traffic, but people driving by 43%, why don't you just reduce the parking spaces by that amount and force people to take public transportation? The second thing is. take public transportation? The second thing is, if you do build the housing, the briefing was, there was mention that penalties would apply for people that would, were not meeting that forty-three percent limit. So who pays that penalty? Is it the people that are going to live in those housing units? Are they going to have to pay a penalty for not, for driving their cars? And then my last question is, will there be a bridge over Cherry so we don't have to stop every time somebody walks across the street? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Melinda Evers. One moment, I'm trying to get Melinda unmuted. Melinda, can you hear us?
Yes, but I did not raise my hand. Apologies.
Okay. Next is Said Estrada. Said, can you hear us?
I can.
Whenever you're ready.
Sure. Thank you so much for allowing a brief moment for this comment. Thank you, City Council. My name is Said Estrada. I'm the outgoing director for the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center of Skyline College, located right on San Mateo Avenue. And I wanted to extend our support of the resolutions for the Bay Hill specific plan and expansion projects, and specifically highlight the partnership and support that Skyline College has received from YouTube, Google over the years. Over the years, YouTube and Google have supported Skyline College efforts and initiatives, and have also played a valuable role in supporting the efforts of the Bay Area Entrepreneur Center as we work to rebuild our local business community during this pandemic. So we support this plan and wish them, wish them good luck and hope you all are well and healthy. Thank you.
Next is Brian Benderluth.
Good evening.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yep, yep, you got me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Hey, thanks. Good evening, Vice Mayor Medina, City Council Members. Tonight I'm representing the San Bruno Education Foundation. We submitted a pre-read letter, and, and so for time I won't restate the content of the letter, but I did want to expand on an idea that was raised in the YouTube presentation. The word partner or partnership were used several times, and that really resonated with me. Most of you know me well enough, know how much I value partnerships and, and kind of what a partnership brings, where each entity contributes something that makes us all stronger. And while we certainly appreciate the very generous financial support from YouTube to our schools over the years, the thing that stands up for me in our partnership kind of goes beyond simply cutting the check. It's the, the occasions where they, for example, open their doors and invited us onto their campus for a fundraiser, when they've contributed executive time and energy to a multi-month planning process where our schools have developed the portrait of the graduate. And maybe most notably, more recently, when our schools went to remote learning in the initial stages of the COVID pandemic, and we reached out to our community partners, recognizing that some of our students didn't have adequate computers or internet service at home, and recognized that they would be left behind. YouTube and Google were certainly one of our first phone calls, and their response was essentially, how can we help, and jumped in with both feet. And I, I cite those instances as, for me, being indicative of the kind of partners they've done to our schools and our community, far beyond simply cutting checks. And so I'm excited tonight as we look together at how we can ensure that that kind of strong partnership can continue well into the future. And thank you for your time.
Next is Alex Malindra.
Hello, City Council, City Staff. I'm Alex Malindra. I don't really have prepared comments here. I'm assuming, as somebody said earlier, that you guys have had a chance to read my email. I have some things out of my comments that I sent in my email regarding housing. In contrast to one of the other comments earlier, I actually don't think there's enough housing. That being said, I would be remiss if I did not mention the many other community benefits that I think that this project does provide. I think that's something I really forgot to highlight. This, you know, first phase of this proposal really does have a lot of great benefit for our community. It's, YouTube has been a proven partner when it comes to our various, you know, education endeavors, either the School Foundation or Skyline. It has the support of two childcare organizations that I really respect in San Mateo County, Build Up San Mateo County and Foresees. Additionally, the existing housing overlays, oh, and obviously the tremendous union support, which you do not always see in a lot of other developments. What was I saying? Oh, yes, with the existing overlays as well. Five hundred and seventy-three, while, as I mentioned, I personally do not think is enough, is not something to laugh at, and it is adding housing into an existing office area that does not currently zone for it. I think that that is still better than nothing. So I do want to, I, I do want to highlight that. I want to appreciate Council Member Hamilton's comments and the commitment of the city of San Bruno to try to develop more housing in San Bruno to create a more inclusive and diverse San Bruno. And overall, if you take the housing part out of it, I am ninety percent happy with the proposal that's going on here. It's going to be a great economic development for our city. And I think I want to really appreciate the work that the city has done on this proposal. So thank you.
Next is Dean Moser.
Good evening, council members and staff of San Bruno, and all the consultants that have worked on this project. Little did I know, in August of two thousand sixteen, that I was going to have YouTube's as a neighbor and venture on a five-year project in seeing what was going to happen at Bay Hill. We're totally excited about Bay Hill as the property owners of eight oh one, eight fifty-one Traeger. And we, we couldn't be more excited. I think that it's obviously going to make our property, you know, more valuable. And we're, you know, looking forward to trying to do some development on our property. Hopefully it doesn't take five years to get approvals. But nevertheless, I think everybody has done a great job on this project, and we're happy to have YouTube's be our neighbor. And we're also very pleased to be part of the San Bruno community. So thank you very much for your time and all five years of effort. We appreciate it, and I think you've done a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Next is Linda Larson.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Linda Larson. My address is fourteen seventy-seven Flora Bunda in Burningame, but the majority of my life is spent at the shops in Tan Duran, where I have been the general manager for the past ten years. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the Bay Hill Specific Plan and to support YouTube's Phase One, as they have been an amazing corporate partner of the city for San Bruno for many years. Since two thousand seventeen, YouTube and Google.org has contributed one hundred thousand dollars per year to the community grants fund. After the two thousand eighteen shooting at YouTube, the Google Foundation and YouTube employees donated over three hundred thousand dollars to San Bruno First Responder Effectiveness Strategic Initiative. These donations funded a mobile command vehicle to assist the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments during critical incident or natural disasters. They have been an annual sponsor of the Skyline President's Breakfast. In response to the pandemic impacts, they donated funding, which we've heard, to San Bruno Park Elementary School District to cover costs associated with distance learning. And they donated one hundred thousand dollars to San Mateo County Childcare Fund, providing emergency grants to childcare operators. Additionally, as a board member of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce, I can attest to the many contributions and resources YouTube has provided to our business community, and wish to thank them for hosting many events at their facility and for appointing Rebecca Prozan, their West Coast Government Affairs and Public Policy Head, as a respected, active, and involved member of the board. I know you are all very versed on, very well-versed on the benefits of this project, specifically the economic benefits, I won't list them again. I simply wish to highlight and applaud the extraordinary partnership YouTube has with the city and to remind us all how fortunate we are to have their world-class corporate campus in San Bruno. I believe the Bay Hill Specific Plan is an absolutely pivotal project for San Bruno's future, and I wholeheartedly support it as well as YouTube's Phase One. Thank you for my three minutes and good night.
Next speaker is Eddie.
Good evening, council members, and good evening, city staff. My name is Eddie Young, and I am the president and CEO of the Police Credit Union of California. In short, I will be a neighbor, actually, I am a neighbor of YouTube, Google right now, and I guess I will be in ground zero when Phase One really kicks in for them. I'm actually here in, speaking in support of the Bay Hill Specific Project. I think that, that YouTube and the Police Credit Union of California really have shared a, a great deal of insight about the potential as well as the benefit of being located in San Bruno. It is one in which a city that affords us, our staff, a greater degree of flexibility, greater degree of comfort as to traveling to and from work. And I think that this project will bring great benefit to all within this San Bruno area. So again, I want to voice my support, wholehearted support for this project. Thank you.
Next is Juan Espinosa Carpenter's.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, members of staff. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Juan Espinosa. I'm a field representative for Northern California Regional Council Carpenters. And I work out of Local Two-Seventeen, which is in Foster City. We dispatch members throughout San Mateo County. In our local, we have about sixteen hundred members. Throughout Northern California, we have over thirty-eight thousand members. And there's so many good things about this project. I'm very proud. Google, Google and YouTube have been great partners with carpenters. I'm calling to urge you guys to approve the Planning Commission recommendation. This is a project that is being well-rounded, well-tod, and all the benefits for the community is just, is just amazing. So please approve this development, and thank you for your time. Have a great night.
Next is Heather Rothenberg.
Good evening, City Council Members and City Staff Members. My name is Heather Rothenberg, and I'm an employee at YouTube. What makes me a bit unique is that I was hired and began working for YouTube as the head of our Global Claims Council during the pandemic. And it almost feels like I'm part of an employment equivalent of a new generation, because this experience of working for a company but not getting to actually be in our offices yet is pretty unprecedented until the COVID pandemic. However, that did not stop me right after being hired from jumping in the car with my wife and dog and driving around Bay Hill and the rest of San Bruno to explore. One of the things I was super excited about was the proximity to BART, so I can ride the train to San Bruno and then my scooter from the BART to the office, one of my favorite ways to commute. San Francisco is home, but I do love to eat, and I can't wait to work my way through the restaurants across San Bruno when we do get to go back to the office. The Combo Molly Stones on Ace Hardware is brilliant, and what a great downtown. Thank you for the years of hard work that led to this meeting and the important decisions that you will make. On behalf of YouTubers like me who are working remotely right now, I can assure you that we cannot wait to be in San Bruno. Thank you so much for your public service and the chance to speak tonight.
Next is Doug.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you. Council members, city clerk, vice mayor, city managers, attorneys, consultants, planners, and all participants. Good evening. My name is Doug Hood, and I'm an owner and manager of eight oh one, eight fifty-one Traeger in the Bay Hill Specific Plan. I'd like to thank everyone tonight that had a hand in this process, and our ownership has been involved with the process since the beginning. At this time, I would like to congratulate YouTube and congratulate the city of San Bruno. The Bay Hill Specific Plan will be a fantastic project, and will be a milestone for the city of San Bruno and YouTube for years to come. We will continue to support and, and with YouTube in our process to complete the Bay Hill Specific Plan. And all along this process, YouTube's been a great neighbor for us. However, and hopefully, the process will be a bit quicker in the near future. And I know YouTube and the ownership of eight oh one and eight fifty-one Traeger will appreciate the acceleration of the campus expansion. So again, I would like to thank everyone that contributed in this process, and we look forward to the future of the Bay Hill Specific Plan. Thank you.
The next speaker is Andrew Cusson. One moment, I'm trying to get Andrew unmuted.
All right. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Andrew Cusson, and I am a senior manager of investments with Regency Centers. Regency is the owner and operator of the Bay Hill Shopping Center, which is included in the Bay Hill Specific Plan. I am speaking tonight to encourage you to adopt the various resolutions and ordinances in front of you in order to implement the Bay Hill Specific Plan. This plan has been in development for years, and I want to highlight the efforts and commend city staff on getting it to its current form. This plan, when finally implemented, will be a boon for the neighborhood and the city of San Bruno. Regency looks forward to maintaining a first-class retail shopping center for the residents of San Bruno, our business owners, and the future Googlers and YouTubers on their campus next door. Additionally, we are excited to explore residential development options at our shopping center to help alleviate an unprecedented housing crisis in the Bay Area. Again, I encourage you to vote to adopt the Specific Plan, certify the EIR, and allow Google to move forward with its Phase One plans. Thank you all.
That was the last speaker.
The last speaker. Excellent.
Through the chair. If you're ready, I'll turn it in motion. I will move that we close the public hearing.
Hold on a second. Excellent.
And I'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. So now we're ready for council comments. I did want to address some of the questions from Mr. Wapinski. The housing plan is five hundred and seventy-three units. The penalty for the driving is, is not to the homeowners, it's to the business, and it's called a mitigation fee. And there are no plans in this. And there are no plans in this, in the specific plan to build a bridge for vehicle traffic over chair. Through the chair, I think the question was about a bridge for pedestrians over chair. And I don't believe that's in the plan as well.
That's absolutely correct.
No bridge over chair. Who would like to start with questions?
Through the chair, I don't have any questions, you know, and, you know, a lot of people have commented how this has been a long process, and we've been discussing a lot of the details over a long period of time. And I think the information has always been very, you know, it's come very freely, and we've done a really good job of putting it out on the Internet and getting people involved. And so, I really don't have any specific questions on what's being proposed. I did want to make one comment, just as a clarification, because some of the comments, and I think people have a good idea of what we're actually doing tonight, but I did want to just sort of clarify that, you know, our first action will be to approve the EIR and the Specific Plan. So, it's basically a roadmap for what will become Bay Hill. And the second action is related specifically to Phase One, which are the buildings that were highlighted in the presentation. So, there will be a lot more construction to come. There's no housing involved in this first phase. So, there will be, you know, more to come, but tonight's action specifically is focused on Phase One and, of course, approval of the overall plan.
Thank you, Councilman Salazar. Anyone else? I'll go ahead and ask a couple of questions then. In the, in the WSA, the water capacity is sufficient. However, how, how close are we to, at one point, will there not be enough water? It's something just that, as we're expecting all of this development, how does approving this impact future development?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We will have our consultant, Amy Klong, who is a panelist, address that question. So, Melissa, I think Amy's in the room, and Amy, if you will unmute yourself and address the question.
Hi, yes. So, Amy Klong from West Yost. We helped the city prepare their water supply assessment and the Water Supply Assessment Addendum. And we're also working with city staff on the urban water management plan that will be coming on October 26. And so, basically, in terms of planning of water supplies, we work on first the demand projections. So, the city also is in a parallel effort working on their Water Master Plan, where we, you know, looked at the current demands, what is proposed to be built. And the next, you know, the urban plan looks at 2045, and basically, that's build-out for the city, and looks at everything that will build out in the city and what the demands are. Then we compare it to the available water supplies. So, for the most recent urban plan, the biggest change has been the supply reliability from SFPUC. It has dropped significantly because of the Bay Delta Plan Amendment, which is requiring flow objectives in the San Joaquin River, additional flow in the rivers for environmental. So, the water supply for SFPUC wholesale customers have decreased. However, the city does have groundwater supply. So, that really is an important piece of your supply portfolio. So, that helps you during the drought and dry periods where you don't have to rely on SFPUC supply. And you can use groundwater to supplement it. So, we looked at demands, compared the supplies in normal, dry, and multiple dry years in the urban plan. And basically, what the conclusion we came to is that, based on the supply available, there'll be need to be a 24% reduction in demands, in total demands, that would be needed to meet supplies in those really dry years. And, you know, we assume that the Bay Delta Plan will be in effect. However, the Bay Delta Plan, there's a lot of uncertainties right now. Lots of lawsuits, as well as a lot of the agencies are working on a voluntary agreement, so that the reductions won't be as bad. So, there's a lot of uncertainties there, but we're planning for the worst. You know, just so you know what, you know, may happen. What may happen is that, in normal years, you have enough supply. In those dry years, single dry years and multiple dry years, there'll be up to a 24% reduction projected. So, that is when the water shortage contingency plan that will come up in October 26 meeting, that will be important to have, because it has steps in there to, you know, to indicate what the city needs to do to hit the percentage reductions. So, Stage One, you know, 10%, Stage Two, 20%, and Stage Three would be a 30% reduction. And the mitigation measures that need to be in place for that. Sorry, I gave you a lot of background, but hopefully that helps you understand what that 24% means.
We have enough water, and we're going to get an update in October on our plan.
Yes, so, you know, in the last drought, you know, the city did show that it could reduce over 20%. They had conservation, and that was able to reduce their demand. So, you know, with, you know, assuming that, you know, the customers can do the same kind of conservation if, you know, supplies get reduced again, that there'll be enough supplies for the project.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions from council, or I can continue. I don't see any hands. I find the plans amazing with a number of trees. And likely, other question besides the appreciation for trees, street sweeping. Will street sweeping be necessary? And if so, who pays for that?
Councilmember Medina, is your question during construction or normal course of street sweeping during the normal course of business as the city does on a weekly basis?
Typically, my question's for after the construction's complete. I've seen the street sweepers there at YouTube currently. But, yeah, primarily, the concern is, who's going to pay for that? I know that we have efforts underway of looking at our street sweeping and with our limited budgets. And I also want to confirm that the maintenance of all the green, the beautiful green walkways, that's being maintained by the developer? Or is there going to be like the property owner association or the city?
So, Councilmember Medina, through the Phase One, YouTube is granting to the city ownership of a portion of Grundy. Currently, we do the street sweeping as a part of our normal operations in the Bay Hill Office Park, where we have some roads we own and feed, other roads we have an easement over. We maintain both street sweeping and roadway maintenance under the plan that will continue. All of the landscaping improvements on private space will be the responsibility of that property owner. The landscaping within the public right-of-way will be the responsibility of the city.
Got it. Another question I have is for the area where the roads leading to the transit center, where all the shuttle buses are going to be circulating. Is it planned to have stronger road sections installed to handle that additional load?
So, the multimodal station is on private property, and so that is Google's YouTube private property, where the multimodal station will be. I think your question is, along the essentially collector rules, Bay Hill and Grundy, that will be the entrance and the exit for those, for that private multimodal station, will the roads be designed and constructed in a way to carry the traffic? Is there, I believe we do have our Public Works Director, Hey Juan, as a panelist. Hey Juan, would you address that question? Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Vice Mayor, council members. I wanted to address the question about the landscaping. That is being maintained by YouTube, and I apologize. While I was looking that up, I missed that question.
Well, first, thank you for clarifying that the median landscaping will be maintained by YouTube. The question was with regard to Bay Hill and Grundy, will the roads be constructed in a manner that will be sufficient for the show bus traffic that will be entering and exiting the Google's YouTube multimodal station?
Yes, so when it is being designed, we have to look at the types of loads that the road will be selected to handle, and that will be factored in the pavement design.
Excellent. Those are my questions. Any other council member have any? Okay.
Vice Mayor, I don't know if you see my hand.
I cannot, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Just a question, comment. So, thank you for the thorough presentation. I think it answered a number of questions along with the staff report. I think just from members of the public, one of the areas that we've heard about is infrastructure. And we saw it in the presentation today, and I just want to reiterate, and I'm not sure who would answer this question, but that part of this entire development is going to provide new infrastructure for these areas that are going to be developed in addition to any impact fees that would go as a regular course of business for the City of San Bruno at this point.
Interior Director, Ricky, can you take the first part of that? And then, we may provide additional information here at City Hall.
Yes, so certainly where Grundy is being realigned, all of the new infrastructure will be provided by YouTube. That includes, well, aside from the private utilities, of course, PG&E would be reinstalling those, but sewer, water, storm, sidewalks, where that is being aligned, YouTube will be funding that infrastructure, as well as we've run various models, and where other utilities need to be upsized, they will also be responsible for, you know, making sure that they have capacity for their site. And as well as other infrastructure improvements such as transportation, they will be paying their share for certain projects in and around Bay Hill to help support the Specific Plan.
Good creation.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off of that, we'll share one slide here that is in regard to citywide infrastructure. And so, with regard to the development agreement, it's important to note that there are area development impact fees where YouTube will pay a portion of projects that are specific to the planning area of the Bay Hill Specific Plan. Part of, Councilmember Mason's question or comment was really wanting to clarify and point out that there is also citywide development impact fees. And in the Phase One, those, and the prepayment for Phase One and Two, that's a total of $14.8 million, that is citywide impact fees, to go towards various community facilities, parks recreation, roads and things of that nature, as well as $10.3 million for affordable housing. We currently just have just over $3.5 million in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund. When this prepayment is made, again, expected middle of 2022, that will add another $10.3 million to that fund, and triple the amount of money, more than triple the amount of money that's in that fund. And additional community benefit payment, that can go to various infrastructure and services in the community of 26 million. And so, that is just the first repayment. All other phases in the DA, 73 million, for a total of 130 million of community benefits. So, yes, absolutely, there is money for infrastructure outside of the planning area, affordable housing, as well as additional community benefit money that the City Council will allocate.
Right, but just so that it doesn't appear to be a big windfall, we're not getting all that at one time, correct? And the city has a number of its own obligations that it needs to invest in as well. The other, I just wanted to just thank everybody who submitted a public comment. We received a number of letters from our partners in the building trades, including not just one from the building trades, but also from the members of Operating Engineers Local Union 3, IBW Local Union 617, Plumbers Local 467, and our Apprenticeship Training Center, Sheet Metal Workers Union Local 104, Carpet Linoleum Softail Workers Local Union 12. And in the letter that we received, which was substantially similar, if not identical, yeah, I just want to highlight that the YouTube project for their two buildings continued through the pandemic, and that they moved forward using 100% of union trades, which is quite remarkable when so many businesses were pulling back. I did look further into the childcare assistance that was provided through COVID, and 24 of those grants went to childcare centers in San Bruno. And so, while we're looking at, you know, this is a long-term vision for San Bruno and the home of YouTube, I do hope that some of the other partner corporations that are coming to San Bruno, that are interested in San Bruno, are taking note, because YouTube has really made an effort to establish not just relationships, but to learn what San Bruno's needs are, so that as they're coming in and growing in San Bruno, they're also assisting, as you, as we all heard tonight, in various areas within San Bruno. So, my questions were answered. I'm excited to approve this item tonight and to move onward. It's exciting. Thank you.
Excellent. No more questions. We have a lot of different things ahead of us here.
All right, through the chair, if you'll allow me, I would like to make a motion to introduce the first resolution, which is approving the Water Supply Assessment Report.
Looking for a second. Hold a second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll take turns. I'll, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution certifying the EIR and adopting sequel findings, facts, statements of overriding considerations, and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Bay Hill Specific and Google, the Bay Hill Specific Plan and Google Phase One project.
Hold a second.
Excellent.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so I'll motion to adopt a resolution amending the San Bruno General Plan to ensure consistency with the Bay Hill Specific Plan.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar? Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and I will make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the Bay Hill specific plan for the Bay Hill area of the city.
And I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't know how I got all the long ones. I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance adding Chapter 12.290 Bay Hill Specific Plan districts to the City of San Bruno Municipal Code, establishing regulations, rehearsals within the Bay Hill specific plan.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I'll motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance amending the City of San Bruno zoning map for the Bay Hill specific plan area.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason? Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and I guess we'll keep going through Item B, and I will make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the phased vesting tentative track subdivision map with outline adjustments, realigning of Grundy Lane involving vacation of current public roadway utility easements, dedication of new roadway right of way, and fee and granting of new utility easements, and a vacation of portions of Elm Avenue as shown on the map for Google LLC's property in the Bay Hill area of the city.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
You're up, Tom. Keep going.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and introduce ordinance approving a development agreement between the City of San Bruno and Google LLC, a California Limited Liability Company, for the Google project located in the Bay Hill Office Park.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'll motion to adopt resolution approving an architectural review permit for Phase One of Google LLC's development plans in the Bay Hill area of the city.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and we were down to the last one, adopt a resolution authorizing various, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing various curb markings, curb marking changes along frontages of 900 Cherry Avenue and 1,000 Cherry Avenue in the Bay Hill area of the City of Phase One of Google LLC's development plans.
I'll second.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Medina?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Wow.
Try reading all of those at once.
That's why you're the president? Okay. What a, what a wonderful night. We have a growing partnership with YouTube, and I look forward to the next groundbreaking there.
Okay, the jawall?
There he is, welcome back, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll bring it to the end of Item Number Seven, comments from councilmembers. There are comments, if you could raise your virtual hand at this time, go around once and hit us out before, hopefully 10:30. Seeing no hands up at this time?
Real quick, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted a quick little report out from the Downtown, Downtown Ad Hoc Committee. We were able to send the modified scope of work and reached out to the Chamber of Commerce and the VAEC, so just wanted to follow up with what we said we're going to do.
Thank you, Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just, I just really wanted to, again, thank staff for all the work that went into tonight's presentation. I know at one point a couple of years ago, the planning team was incredibly short-staffed, and what's really been done to make tonight happen, I know, has been a significant amount of work hours, and because their salary, they're probably not, there's no overtime pay, but the benefit to this community won't be forgotten, and so I just wanted to really thank staff for all their hard work around this particular project. And then I wanted to also highlight that I did visit that Tanfran Art Zone and reiterate really what a kind of breath of fresh air it is to see something different in a mall, and if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, Ruth Waters will actually just stand at the window of the location, and you can see her carving her beautiful wood artwork, and it's quite nice, it's not, it's not like anything I had seen before, so I really encourage people to go and encourage the growth of that art zone within Tanfran. So thanks so much.
Okay, any other hands from other colleagues?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. Just wanted to encourage parents and the public to join the PTA or PTO of the school that's nearby. There is a big effort to generate support, and also wanted to share the call for noon time supervision at Parkside and other elementary schools. They can really use some help, so if people are interested, they can contact the district office and work on helping out supervise noon time, noon time at our schools. That's it, thank you.
Okay, last call, any other councilmembers? Okay, well, since you guys haven't seen me in a little while, I have a few things to report. Couple things, I wanted to mention this, and I hadn't posted it, but after I came back from Sacramento Friday night, St. Bruno's held an event. It was a dinner, but most importantly, there was music by Shane Ericks, and I had not heard of her, but if you like Carpenters and you like, it was beautifully done, it was impressive, I did record one, I'll send it out, but it was a great evening and music that was performed by all. Also, some of us, a couple of us attended on Saturday Relay for Life, which was held at Parkside, and as you know, that has begun, and obviously, I think, as I said there and I'll say here, that is one thing, regardless, we all get behind and stand behind and rally behind for that. Also, Monday, some of us attended a ribbon cutting, first one we've had in a long time in the city at Planet Fitness, met the franchisee owners, which were Lynn and Eric, and were incredible folks, and as I mentioned there, the general manager of that facility is, just moved in, is a resident now of San Bruno, so I wanted to mention that as well, just some of the things I and some of our councilmembers have been doing, and what I did not know, until I came home last night, and there was a tape, a envelope to my home, that said to my neighbor in my address, and it said, this was yesterday, so it said, "Open 9/28/21", so I thought, okay, do I honor the request and not open it, or do I actually honor it? And I did, I honored it, and I opened it today to find that it is Happy National Neighbor Day. So that was something I got educated today, and I'm glad I kept the desire of the sender. So anyway, to all, which we'll know now for next year, Happy National Neighbor Day. So with that said, wish all of you the very best, a good, healthy, happy week, and therefore we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October 12, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. Everyone be safe, take care, and good night.